Row, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson. Mr. President.
Here. Please rise for the pledge and remarks by Councilmember Row.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Please have a seat.
I wanted to start off today by telling a story. It's not original with me. I found it somewhere. I thought it was kind of a fun story. It takes a disciplined spirit to endure the monastery at Montserrat in Spain. One of the fundamental requirements of this religious order is that the young men must maintain silence. Opportunities to speak are scheduled once every two years, at which time they are allowed to say two words. One young initiate in this religious order who had completed his first two years of training was invited by his superior to make his first two-word presentation. "Food terrible," he said. Two years later, the invitation was once again extended. The young man used his form to explain, exclaim, "Bed lumpy." Arriving at his superior's office two years later, he proclaimed, "I quit." The superior looked at this young monk and said, "You know, it doesn't surprise me a bit. All you've done since you arrived is complain, complain, complain." Exaggerated, maybe. What if you were asked to share two words to describe your life? Would your focus be on the lumps, the bumps, and unfairness? Or are you committed to dwell on those things that are good, right, and lovely?
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
In affidavit, a publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in the white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Omaha City Council. Appreciate having you here today. Look forward to your testimony on our many items. But I encourage you to turn your cellphones off, or at least to vibrate. If you have any difficulty hearing the proceedings today, you can see our building commission attendant for a hearing device, and we do have closed captioning in the back of the room as well. We're going to start today's meeting with a proclamation and presentation for Irish American Heritage Month by Councilmember Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. Whereas Irish American Heritage Month began in 1991 with presidential proclamation establishing a month-long celebration of the contributions that Irish immigrants have made to the culture, social, political, and economic development of communities throughout the nation. And whereas Irish Americans have shown resilience, strength, and determination in overcoming adversity to achieve success and prosperity while maintaining their strong cultural heritage, taking pride in celebrating Irish history and traditions which enrich diversity and fabric of our Omaha communities. And whereas Irish Americans were among the farmers, factory workers, and laborers who helped build Omaha's infrastructure, the individuals who established the first police and fire departments tasked with protecting Omaha's neighborhoods, the teachers responsible for educating future generations of Omahans, and the entrepreneurs who place Omaha at the forefront of U.S. industry and innovation. And whereas during the month of March, we honor our Irish ancestors and all who carry on their legacies and values which bind Ireland and Omaha together, determination, decency, and dignity, which have been passed down through generations by way of local celebrations, including the annual St. Patrick's Day Parade, which was three days ago. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Omaha celebrates the remarkable contributions Irish Americans have made to our community's character, culture, and prosperity, and recognize March 2025 as Irish American Heritage Month. In witness whereof, we have set our hands and caused the official seal of the City of Omaha to be affixed on this 11th day of March 2025. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And happy St. Patrick's Day, everybody.
There we go.
Madam Clerk.
Item six, to consider a Class D liquor license for Tara Gaucho Brazilian Steakhouse located at 13851 First National Bank Parkway.
The public hearing and vote on number six is today. Proponents, please.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is David Houghton, 2804 South 87th Ave. Here on behalf of the applicant, Southern Brazz Omaha LLC, doing business as Tara Gaucho Brazilian Steakhouse, which will be located at 13851 First National Bank Parkway. Some of you may be familiar with the location. It's the old Charleston's Restaurant. In attendance with me today is the managing member, Rodolfo Mello. This is the fifth restaurant that they will be putting in with the same concept, which of course is a Brazilian steakhouse. They have two in Florida, one in Indiana, and one in Connecticut. And saw an opportunity in West Omaha for this concept. If you have any questions about the business, their hours will be, they anticipate being open until 10:30, running the bar business in those typical hours. Sometimes they may go over 15 or 20 minutes. Other than that, if you have any questions about their license or about the business, Mr. Mello, who's the managing member, is here. I'd be happy to answer any questions I could. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Move the approval.
There's a motion, a second, to approve. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Row, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item seven, to consider a Class D liquor license for No Good located at 3528 Center Street.
Public hearing and vote on number seven is today. Proponents, please.
Hello. My name is Katina Tally, and I own, sorry, 2407 Hanscom Boulevard. I own several restaurants and businesses here in Omaha, and my brunch concept, No Good, is looking to open on, at 20, or sorry, 3528 Center Street this spring. We are a brunch and bagel concept that just would like to offer brunch cocktails during the hours of 7:00 to 2:00 p.m.
Thank you. And No Good is K-N-O-W, right?
Yes. Yes. Important distinction.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Cat, a couple of questions. If you and Mark want to come back up. I'm flushing you out now, Mark, sorry. Good afternoon. Thanks for coming down today. You and I had a nice chance. You know, Archetype Coffee is one of the many places you own. So tell us a little bit about what the menu is going to look like here at No Good on Center Street there.
Yeah, so our focus is largely bagels and sandwiches, looking to have a menu that would bridge breakfast until lunch. We'll also have a pastry menu, as well as like some like, you know, cafe favorites, like bacon and eggs and things like that.
And when you and I talk, tell us a little bit about your background. You're from Friend, Nebraska, if I remember correctly.
I am.
Is that right?
Yes.
And you were at ConAgra before?
I was, yes.
And education-wise, tell us what you did at ConAgra.
Yeah, so my degree's in food science and technology. I worked at ConAgra Foods for five years in product development, so taking basically recipe to the grocery store shelf.
Well, I was impressed just listening to your background, and I know you're going to do great. I know you reach out to the neighborhood people, and you're still waiting to get connected. But when I, when I reached out to Chris Porter, they were excited, as are the other businesses in that, in that stretch of center. And what's, what's the other places that you have businesses currently right now?
So I own the two locations of Suite Magnolia's Big Shop. One in, on 40th Street, 40th and Coming, and one in the new Millwork Commons District. And then No Good, which is, as you mentioned, is located in the Little Bohemia location of Archetype Coffee.
Well, I'll make a motion to support this, and I'll look forward to getting in. And what are the hours? That's the other thing I wanted to ask. What are the hours going to be?
7:00 to 2:00. 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. is the plan.
Okay. Well, I wish you it's good to meet you here today, Mark, and I'll look forward to seeing you guys when I'm getting a sandwich at Barrett's and coming down to No Good and Archetype, and wish you the best of luck. I know you're going to do well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. There's a motion, a second, to approve. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Row, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Good luck.
Item eight, to consider a Class D liquor license for Thai Kitchen located at 16909 Lakeside Hills Plaza Suite 101.
Public hearing and vote on number eight is today. Proponents, please.
Hey, good morning, council. My name is Adam Stevens. Together with my wife, we own Thai Kitchen. For the last year and a half, we've been the current owners of the restaurant, and several of my guests have asked or inquired about some mild alcoholic beverages, like beer and wine, be added to the menu. And I've been toying with the idea for several months at this point, and we finally decided just to act on this. My wife could not be here. We had a call-out, so she's at the restaurant currently. But she would like to have been here. And yeah, we just like to just improve our guest experience. Just, we got several selections. We're still working on wine menu. As far as beer, we're looking at several different import-type beers. We've been, we're all up to date on all of our inspections. We're completely, we want to be a good, a good corporate citizen of this city and keep growing.
Great. And your address, just for the record?
Our address at the restaurant is 16909 Lakeside Hills Plaza Suite 101.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. There's a motion, a second, to approve. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Row, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you, council.
Thanks.
Item nine, to consider a Class D liquor license for Y Family Convenience Store located at 7102 North 30th Street. A's Communication Opposition.
The public hearing and vote on number nine is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, City Council. This is Peng Lee. I'm attorney representing the family here. And may please the council and the public, I want to say a couple of things about the family who's applying for this liquor license. And this is a minority and family-owned grocery store and convenience store. We plan to have 65% of items as groceries and household goods, including fresh vegetables, fruits, and refrigerated goods, and frozen food, dairy products. And the remaining 35%, the inventory will consist alcohols. That's required a liquor license. The building that my client purchased was a tobacco store and had been vacant for about six months before the family purchased it. Before acquiring the property, and the family did engage in some conversations with the neighbors and asking their concerns and thoughts and approvals for opening the store. And some of the neighbors noted that there are enough liquor stores nearby, and some of them supported ideas of having a grocery store nearby. We also surveyed the surrounding area, confirmed there's no school or churches within 500 feet of the property. We recently received an email from one of the neighbors, expressed concerns about the crimes in the neighborhood and stating that approving the liquor license application would add more crime. And we understand and respect her concerns, and as well, we also want a safe community. The Y Family Convenience Store shares the same goal, a safe, thriving neighborhood where the good neighbors and responsible business support each other. And to address those safety concerns and the convenience, Y Family Convenience Store is committed to strictly comply with the liquor sale regulations, verifying the ages and of every customer purchasing alcohol, installing security cameras throughout the premises to prevent any onsite alcohol consumptions. My understanding is some of the concerns involves in those miniature bottles, and people will purchase them and then take shot and drink them on the premises. You know, if that's part of the concern, we can eliminate that miniature alcohol sale. And then we also plan to hire additional staffs, such as cashiers, maybe security personnels, to enhance the safety of the neighborhood. We want to benefit the surrounding neighbors and support the local communities. The Y Family Convenience Store is committed to provide very affordable on groceries, housing items. They also participate in the neighborhood meetings. In fact, they went to one last week as well. So today, with my attendance, the family is also present as well. So if the city has any questions, we're here to answer your questions.
Okay, thank you. And just your address for the record, too?
Yes, it's 8424 West Center Road, Suite 108, Omaha, Nebraska, 68124.
Great, thank you. Are there any other proponents that want to speak at this point?
My name is Mitna. My government name is Rachel Parker. I am an enrolled member of the Omaha tribe. I am a bird woman. I come and speak on behalf of my community, as I was born and raised right on that street, 30th and Vane. My family home, which is a generational home that consists of six generations, have lived there since 1971. In all due respect to you identifying as a minority business, I am a keeper of this land.
Let's make sure you address those.
I am a direct descendant of Gehigi Jinga, little chief, who stood right next to Big Elk and Chief Standing Elk. My grandmother, Mary Woods, stayed, was at the Bellevue Fort during colonization. My great-grandmother, who was raised by Mary Woods, grew up in that home. And what I can tell you, what I have seen along that street, there is a bus that's, a bus stop that sits right on the corner of where that business resides. That parking lot allows maybe two people to park there. Where does that leave other people along our street? My home consists of special needs children, my mother who is disabled. Now, we can stop refraining from the little bottles, right? But that doesn't mean that people don't stop doing it in the parking lot and on the street. And I remember when it was a tobacco store, and we had issues with cars going up and down that street. It is a quiet neighborhood. So I stand before you as a person of lived experience and generations in that community, and being an Omaha tribal member, a protector of the community. And so I speak on behalf of everybody in that area, not to mention, a block away is NP Mart, where they were running a sex trafficking operation. A block over, let's cross the street to Walgreens Pharmacy, they also sell liquor. Let's go a block over where there is a grocery store, and they sell groceries. They also sell liquor. So with that, I respectfully oppose a liquor license being approved in that neighborhood at this time. Weep la ha, thank you.
Thank you. And just your address for the record, too? I don't think we got that.
My name is Rachel Parker. My address is 3011 Vane Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68112.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's David Lawrence, and I live at 2886 Vane Street. And I live directly to the east of this new convenience store, and I've lived in my house since 1983. And I can tell you that the west side of 30th Street is very, very noisy, and over the years, it's just gotten worse and worse, and I think that's because of the types of stores that have opened up in the last couple of blocks. For example, there was that new NP Mart that's just one block away from the new convenience store, and within a two-block range, there are already three places where you can buy alcohol. You know, there's the Baker's Store, there's the Walgreens, there's the NP Mart, and that's just in our block. And if you go south on 30th Street, there's the Four Aces and two more liquor stores that are, that are on those streets. So, you know, within about one mile, we have six, I think, six locations where you can buy alcohol, you know? I think that also includes the Walgreens. I think they sell beer. But anyway, right next door to the new convenience store, there's a motorcycle club. I think it's a private club, and they are very, very noisy. I can tell you that during the good months of the year, that we have to close our doors because of the motorcycles. There are many times, you know, 30 and 40, 50 motorcycles at a time that congregate right next door to the convenience store. They have a little bitty parking lot, but they're very noisy, and I think if you have another liquor license on our block, it's just going to increase the noise and the disruption. And, you know, really, in Minnaluosa, we have a very quiet neighborhood, really, relatively, except for 30th Street. And I'm right on the center of it. I have to keep my doors closed in the, in the spring and summer, you know, after four o'clock in the afternoon because of the motorcycles, and now we're going to have alcohol sales directly across the street, you know? I'm within 200 feet of their front door, actually. So I firmly oppose this. I hope we can, it's nothing personal with the people that are, that are doing this, but, you know, it's just a matter of our peace and quiet, you know? In my house, I do not have peace and quiet after four o'clock during the warmer months of the year. So I firmly oppose this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Omaha City Council. Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson and Question Foundation. I think this here story that they're saying, that's my old friend Dan Lynch's territory, a district, that they're speaking of. So it's my understanding, interstate's going to connect, and all that land's going to be sold anyway, so might as well let them have it, because the interstate now, if you go down and ask those folks, they ready to sell, because in 1970, what, '74? Nobody wants to sell. That's why the interstate stopped at Ames. So in the meantime, they ready to go down in Florence. And everybody down there told me they'll sell right away, so just send the city down there.
Any other opponents to number nine?
Good afternoon. My name is Nancy Gardner. I live at 2720 Iowa Street. I'm the president of the Miller Park Minnaluosa Neighborhood Association. My neighbors took a vote and asked that we stand here and oppose this application. We do want to thank the family sincerely for coming to our Neighborhood Association meeting. Not all applicants for a liquor license do that, so we acknowledge that effort to reach out. As my neighbors have stated, there's at least six places that sell liquor within a mile, possibly seven now. And there's four, those are Minnemarts. Four Aces, a longstanding neighborhood business, had to begin selling liquor because its Minemart couldn't compete anymore with po' boys that moved in. So there's really pretty intense competition, and we're finding that liquor sales is kind of the race to the bottom, because now, poor boys, we found out just this week, and this is our oversight, was approved last week for drinks by, alcohol by the drink, and an outdoor venue. We're very concerned about that, because it's right next to Miller Park, it's right next to a school, but that ship has possibly sailed. So again, we recognize that the family has made an effort. We appreciate new businesses moving into our neighborhood. But we do have an issue with plentiful liquor sales in our neighborhood and stiff competition between Minnemarts, and of course, the parking and noise issues that have been discussed. Thank you.
Thank you. Other opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to point out that this area in which the liquor license is being requested is in District Two, which is my district, that I serve individuals such as Ms. Gardner. I did have the opportunity to attend the neighborhood meeting, and I should note that the neighborhood was unaware that this license, or this request for a license was, was going to be on today's agenda. And that speaks to this narrative that the requirements of a liquor license only comes before this body one time, giving very little time for individuals, neighborhoods, et cetera, to react, or talk about, or discuss what will ultimately impact their neighborhoods. When we have agendas come before the community on Thursday evening, that means Friday, one business day, Monday, two business days, those neighborhoods are able to react, or not react, to a liquor license, which I believe is not, certainly not enough time to respond to something. So many times, the liquor license are coming before us with that short window, and I would ask that we look at that and look at possibly changing how that is brought to us. But I also would like to say to Nancy, we are a body that just recommends approval or denial. So if this should pass, again, if this is something that the neighborhood does not want, I would certainly encourage you to go to Lincoln, because they ultimately have the final say. But because we have had a number of people that have come before this body today, and this is in my district, I will not support this. I move that the liquor license be denied.
Well, second that, to have it on the table. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you. First, Peng, could I have you come back? I had a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
So on your, your percentage of space for each of the items, like fruits, vegetables, frozen goods, things like that?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned that's about 65%. And then the remaining 35% would be for the liquor sales. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is there any, any space for office space, or, you know, kind of a backroom space or anything, or?
Yes, I think I'll have the owner do, to answer that question, if that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Yodit. Y-O-D-I-T.
Okay. An address for the record, too, please?
The address is 7102 North 30th Street.
Okay. You might want to move those microphones just a little bit. There you go. Thank you. So, you know, could you, I'm trying to get a breakdown of how the store might be set up. So is there, I mean, what we've been provided with from the letter from Lee Law, is that 65% of the floor space is inventory consisting of fruits, vegetables, refrigerated goods, frozen foods, dairy products, household essentials, and 35% would be to the liquor sales?
Correct.
And my, I guess my question then is, I assume you have a kind of a office area or something for the manager to, you know, take care of inventories and things like that?
Yes, the building is kind of like split in half, so there's an area where we can form it into an office, and it would be separate from where we'll do the...
So half of the building would not be for grocery at all? Is that right?
It's already like, there's already, it's already split in half. There's like a, like a wall that splits it in half, so there's only one area that's going to be for groceries, liquor, and everything, and then the inside part is where we're gonna, we can make, turn it into an office.
Okay, so the building's only 1,848 square feet.
Mm-hmm.
So you're telling me, so the, you're going to have a 900-foot-ish space for your groceries and liquor? and liquor?
I don't have the exact, like, measurements, but I would say like about 1,600, part of it will be for the store, and then the rest of it, there's small area where we can turn it into an office.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, even if it were the 1,800 square feet, I don't have any more questions for you, but thank you very much. There we go. I guess I was being played music off. I mean, that's 650 feet, if it were 35 percent based upon the whole space being devoted to groceries and liquor sales, and we know that's not right. Now you're telling me that it might be only half of the building, and therefore, that'd be a little over 300 square feet for the liquor, so. I'm not sure I'm completely understanding the business model on this, but again, I don't have any more questions for you. You can sit down. Thank you. But one of the issues I do have is that it was previously used as, I think, tobacco sales, and I think someone else mentioned that, that that was the previous use. So when the ownership would come in for a change of use, it would require a new permit, and since it's 1,848 square feet of office, or of building space, that would require nine parking stalls, because it's basically about two per hundred. I don't have any questions for you, Mr. Lee. So even if you, and I've heard some mention of, you know, taking down the canopy, there's no possible way geometrically how you could put nine stalls on there and not be violating the right of way. So I find it interesting that, you know, when, maybe what should happen first is you should probably investigate whether or not you can even have this operation and provide the required parking for that use before you come in for the liquor license. So I know there's a motion and a second, and there's some other lights on, so I'll, I might have some other comments later, but I'm having trouble with this application based upon those facts.
Thank you. Mr. Hug, you're recognized.
I'll take the attorney. So people refer to this as a former tobacco store. I think prior to that, it was a dry cleaning facility, if I remember correctly. There is no parking lot in back of the building.
If I may just respond quickly about the parking concern in general, my understanding is that currently, the, there are six parking spots in front of the building, and as we submit the application, I think there's a dimension of the drawing diagram submitted along with the application. And the family did talk to the neighboring business as well, and then they were willing to let the family convenience store to use the additional five or six parking spots.
Okay, so there's no additional parking in back of the building?
I don't...
So on this side of the building, there is parking, and we're working with the neighbor. There, he's letting us park on the side, and if more parking is needed in the back, we're planning to buy the area in the back to do more parking. But for now, we have five to six in the front, and then on this side, we'll have five to six more, so.
Okay, so I guess we're just verifying here, there is no additional parking currently on the back of the building of property you control right now?
Not on the back.
Okay. It says that this is, it appears that you have moved from a different location? Were you at a different location? Are you at a different location now?
We don't have any other business.
Okay. So it says new application, new location, so you don't, you're not, you weren't at a previous location?
No.
Okay. And have you applied for an occupancy permit?
Yes, and it's all passed, all inspection is passed. So we're just gonna, we're just waiting to, for the paper to, certificate to be sent home.
Okay, so you've applied for occupancy permit through...
Yes, all passed.
City of Omaha Planning, and they've issued you an occupancy permit?
Planning, electrical, fire, they all passed it, health department.
Okay. Do we know what square footage they approved you on? Mr. Fanslaw?
I did, take Fanslaw City Planning. This is the first I've heard about this case. I can't verify if they have an occupancy permit and what they've applied for. It's the first I've heard about this. Nobody reached out before the meeting, so I can't answer your questions right now.
Okay. Do you own the property, or are you leasing it?
Owned.
I'm sorry?
Own.
Owners?
We're owning it, yeah.
Okay. All right, I think that's all the questions I got for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Begley.
Thanks, Mr. President. Ms. Gardner, can I ask you a couple of questions? Good afternoon. Just the neighborhood meeting, so tell me, how did that go? Did you get, tell me your...
Sure.
...experience with this and how you were notified of it?
So we did receive an email about this in February. I did not see it in my email basket.
Okay.
I'm new to the position. I may have confused it with something else. So we did get a notice, and then the family did attend Thursday at our meeting and brought up the license, which is when we realized what was happening.
That was the first, I don't mean to interrupt you, but that was the first you heard?
That was my first knowledge of it, yes.
Okay, and I'm not trying to play gotcha on the email.
No, no, no. I need to acknowledge that the city did send an email.
Okay, and I, your reputation precedes you, that you do your homework, and you're a great reporter at the World Herald. When you were there, I enjoyed reading you, but, so that, so tell me how that meeting went on Thursday, then?
So this portion of the meeting was towards the end. The family introduced themselves and explained why they were there, and answered questions from the neighbors. And we adjourned the meeting, and afterward, we began discussing, well, should we take a position of this? And David, one of our neighbors, reached out to us and also asked for our support, which got us thinking more. And we did an online poll of our Neighborhood Association, a vote by mail, so to speak, and 12 of our members responded, with 10 opposed and two in favor.
Okay.
And then, and of course, as you know, there's three or four other additional people who testified in writing to you guys.
Got it. Okay, thanks. I appreciate you verifying that for me. Thanks. Mr. Lee?
Yes, sir.
Just curious, what kind of outreach did your client do, just so I'm clear, besides the notifications that were sent, did, and they attended, you attended the meeting on Thursday, was there anything done before that?
I believe so. I believe they knocked on immediate neighbors' doors and talked to some of the neighbors.
Okay.
And then some of the neighbors noted that there are enough liquor stores nearby, and some neighbors noted that, you know, it really didn't make a difference to them because there are enough liquor stores nearby. And they did, you know, knock on some of the neighbors' doors and talk to the people before the first time attending that meeting.
Okay, thank you. I got a question for Mr. Stube on the traffic, if you can, Bob?
Bob Stube, Public Works.
This, the old Maxey Walker here, so I'm assuming Public Works Traffic Engineering, is there an issue here at all with people going in and out of this establishment to get whatever products we're going to get?
Well, it comes down to, I mean, it's on a major street, so it's on 30th Street. So about 30th Street, obviously, Bain Street to the, to the south is a residential street. So again, not knowing what kind of traffic is going to be generated at this particular location, there is no question that there's a majority of traffic is on 30th Street versus on the side street.
Okay, thanks, Bob. That's all the question I have for now, Mr. President. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just so we're clear, my previous line of questioning regarding the process in which the community or the neighborhood is notified, I just wanted to be on the record that not at any time that I say that the city or staffing didn't do what they should have done in terms of notification. My point of reference was the process in which it being in a written notification on this agenda causes concern because of the one-time event, and because the agenda is posted on Thursday, giving the community at large just three days to see this. Just want that to be clear on the record, because many times, folks have interpretations of what's being said different than what's actually being said. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding?
Thanks. I was doing a little quick math here. One of, actually, I want to, I'll play the other side of the coin now for a little bit. The property, I assume, is posted when the notifications are sent out, and we are just a recommending body, so I don't, I'm not questioning the process or how this is done, but I think there's plenty of opportunity for those to weigh in, and as evidenced by the Neighborhood Association meeting and having a full understanding of it. Mr. Stube, if I could?
Bob Stube, Public Works.
So the, this location, as was pointed out, was previously, most recently, a tobacco store, and then previously to that was a dry cleaner. And it appears that there is access to, or a curb cut, if you will, to 30th Street. If they, if the ownership were to come in and do the kind of work that they do, they would have to pull a permit. So I'm not sure, one is, would the curb cut be allowed to stay on 30th Street? This is to address the traffic issue. And if it's not you answering that, it might be planning. But I'll ask Public Works first. Would that curb cut remain if a permit were to be pulled on the, for the improvements to be made to the property?
Yeah, in this particular case, unless there's, to my understanding, unless there's a major renovation that's occurring at that particular location, so if the permit you're talking about is specifically related to improvements inside the existing building, there would be no action on our part relative to eliminating that particular curb cut.
Okay. And Mr. Fanslaw, I assume that's the same with planning?
That's, yeah, that's my understanding as well.
Okay.
If it, if the review dictates that Public Works look at a site for curb cuts, it would be routed to...
And because it's, because the improvements would be probably limited to the interior of the building, then that wouldn't cause that review. What if, what if the canopy were removed from the building that sits out in front of it? I don't know if you've seen a picture of it.
I just pulled it up.
Okay.
Probably not. That might just be a simple demo permit.
All right, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Milton.
This is for the owner. Mr. Lee, you can come up, or have, or both of you can come up, just so you can answer. I think I want to go back, I think Councilman Harding really kind of called up something that I initially thought when I saw the, and by the way, the picture I got of the building is from one of the opponents. That's, I'm looking at a picture of the, of it off one of the opponent's emails, and I noticed that the building was so small, and when you said you were going to have, you know, fresh fruit and home items and all this, and I thought the building was small just looking at the entire building, and then to find out that it might even be half that size, I mean, how many shelves are you going to have of food?
It's not small, sorry. It's not small. I mean, we're not, we're not dividing it, it's just the way, that's just how it's built. We're not like remodeling or anything. So there is enough space. So the office space that I was talking about is just, it's very, it's very small, so it's much bigger than what it looks on the picture.
Okay, well, I'm just trying to figure out, when you talk about having this, like, how many shelves are you going to have of food? I mean, do you know how many freezers? How many refrigerator sections?
I mean, we were planning to do like 10, 10 walk-in, 10-door walk-in cooler, so we can put all the drinks in there. And then for the fresh fruits and vegetables, we'll have another four to five refrigerator. And then in the middle, we can have two, two long shelves to put everything in.
So there'll be two shelves?
Yeah, two long shelves like this.
Okay. You think you can get 12 freezers and refrigerator?
Yeah, walk-in cooler, so it'll go like, it'll be like L-shaped.
I'm guessing you don't mean walk-in. I'm guessing you just mean a door that opens.
Walk-in cooler. So, which means like, it'll be like really big walk-in cooler, so it goes like this. It's like L-shaped.
Okay, well, a walk-in cooler means you actually walk into it. Is that, is that where you're gonna, you mean, is that what you're gonna have for beer?
Yeah. And then, I mean, in the front, customers will just open the door and get what they need, but in the back, it will have a little door to, for us to go in and stock, stock the items.
Okay. And I guess, and I understand you don't have any kind of drawings or anything to show. I mean, do you already have all of that ordered?
We have it, we have it pictures. I don't have it with me, but we have the remodel we're planning to order once every, so yeah.
Okay, have you ordered all of those coolers?
We haven't ordered it yet, no.
Okay, so you're just, you're just kind of in the planning stages?
But we have the model, yeah.
Okay. And I think, by the way, I think you're doing it the right way. You're making sure you can get the liquor license before you throw a bunch of money away into something that you may not necessarily get. So I commend you for doing the right order...
Thank you.
...of things. I just, I do find that, I have a feeling with the space you have, you aren't going to be able to have as much food versus alcohol in the percentages you have. That would be my concern, is that I think it's going to turn into being at least half-alcohol, if not more, just due to the limited amount of space. But that's, I would say that that's my big, that's my biggest concern. I get, I want to make sure that we have fresh fruit, vegetables, where people in the neighborhood can walk and get milk and, well, eggs, if the price comes down, that maybe we can buy eggs again, that they have the ability to do that, that they can walk, ride your bike. You don't have to drive all the way to Baker's in order to get the food. And I understand that alcohol sales sometimes is that thing that we have to allow to happen so that there can be a profit, so that the business can actually stay open.
Exactly.
So I'm always weighing the two. My concern, though, is that this is just going to end up being a liquor store instead of actually providing the food that I want to see for the neighborhood. So I guess that, I'm just letting you know that that's where I, I'm just not sure I'm sold on the fact that it's going to be primarily food and household items. I'm just not sure that I see the space.
I mean, as you said, it'll be, it'll be more groceries and house items, but as you said, the liquor, like, if you don't have the liquor there is next door, people aren't going to make two stops. Even our goal is to do more groceries and house items, because people can just come and get it, but since there is another store right next to us, people will not want to make two stops. So if they want liquor and some other items, they will go to the next door, and they won't come to us to grab groceries, because they won't want to make two stops. That's why we want to add liquor, so we can have everything that way. It's about competition, not necessarily because we don't have liquor. But our goal is to mainly provide the neighbors with, you know, groceries and house items. And as we said, it's a repeat, sorry, but before we bought this property, we went around the neighborhood, every door we knocked, we, there was a side that we didn't reach, it was on the east side, I believe, we didn't get to, but we went to the whole area and we asked, like, are you okay if we include liquor in there? And they were like, yeah, I mean, it's fine. So there is, there is... So there is, there is another store here, so why not you? Or, we have a list, actually, I have a picture of it, all the people, we just took their first names and their home addresses, and they were like, they were fine. There was one person who, who said, we have enough. But everyone else said, you know, it's great, we will support you, or, you know, it makes no difference for us because there's already a store here.
All right, well, and, and I appreciate that. They're not here today and we don't, we didn't receive any emails from those people. And I guess, here's my, I'm going to kind of go on the flip side. As, as Councilwoman Johnson said, we're just a recommending body. And I have to tell you, the Liquor Commission has a history of, we can recommend denial, but they're going to allow it. That, it seems to be a pattern. What I usually prefer to do is ask that we get, there's a motion to deny, we'll have a vote on that. What I would prefer to do, if it goes to the Liquor Commission and they reverse what a denial here, there will be no limitations. I think the neighborhood, one of the biggest concerns is having those single cans in the shooters. That becomes such a problem. So if we deny it today, I just want to let the neighborhood know, and it goes down to the Liquor Commission, there will be no conditions if it's granted. They'll be allowed to sell the single cans in the shooters. So I oftentimes feel like we're kind of in that position where I would rather approve it with conditions and then the Liquor Commission will uphold those conditions. My fear is if the neighborhood wants us to just deny it today, we, the neighborhood runs the risk of having it approved down in Lincoln and then having no conditions on it, because Lincoln won't put any conditions on it. So I don't know if that's something that maybe, instead of voting today, I'm just, Ms. Johnson has her motion, but that may be something that maybe the neighborhood and the business would want to take the next week to discuss and have this come back and have a layover. I'm, I'm just putting it out there because I would certainly hate to see, the, I would certainly hate to see the Liquor Commission, which they have done many, many, many times, reverse this council's denial, and then I think the neighborhood's going to be in a much worse position. So, I'm kind of throwing it out there, I know there's a motion, but perhaps if there's some agreement between the parties, maybe Ms. Johnson would, would support that.
Thank you, Council. If I may, we are 100% willing to work with the neighborhood and to, to see this resolved. As, as we spoke earlier, this is a small family-owned branch and it's not a big corporations. We care about the neighborhood. We want to, the best for the neighborhood and because it's good for our business as well. And then if that takes another week, two weeks, we're happy to get this resolved before a final recommendation.
Yeah, and it may, it may not get resolved, but maybe there could be some reassurances. Maybe you could actually get together with the Neighborhood Association, show the drawings, actually show them, what do I plan to buy? What do I want to, what's going to be on the shelves? You talk about the two shelves. I mean, really sit down and show that to them, because I think if you were providing food and, and something that would be good for people to walk down the street and get, the neighborhood might actually embrace it. I, to me, I don't think you're showing me enough that I'm comfortable with what I think you may, your goal may be, but you're, if you're not showing it here, the neighborhood hasn't seen it either. And again, I just want to warn the neighborhood, by just standing up and saying denial, I'm just afraid you're going to get something worse in the end. So I, maybe there could be a win-win or at least some accountability so the things that maybe you're promising the neighborhood, the Neighborhood Association can kind of hold you to some of those, those promises that you're making. So I'm, I'm just going to put that out there. If the denial is withdrawn or doesn't pass, I'm more than happy to make a motion to lay this over and give you some more time. And I think you're right, I think I heard Councilman Hug say 30 days, probably one week isn't enough. But I don't think we can lay it over 30 days. What's the timeframe, Madam Clark?
Yeah, you can lay it over one week to the 18th.
Okay, so we're under a time constraint on the liquor application. So we could only lay it over for one week. I liked your, I liked your thought, but. Well, unfortunately, we're not. We actually have to follow the procedures by state statute. So I'm more than willing to do that, lay that over.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe.
I had, I had a question to Mr. Lee or.
Yes, sir.
Why? You've done a great job on doing marketing research, obviously, you know the market. And one of the things that we hear a lot about up in, in these neighborhoods up north is that there is a food desert, that there, people are looking for places to, to buy groceries, to buy the fresh fruits and vegetables. And I'm wondering, did you do any research? I mean, what, what is the neighborhood like when it comes to availability of those kinds of products? We know there's plenty of liquor. Is there plenty of food and grocery and household items in the neighborhood?
I had to defer that question to, to my client who's running the business operations, but our plan is to utilize the local services and business to, to get those food items as well for the neighborhood. To the exact, what kind of items going to be on the shelf, I'm not 100% sure, Council.
Okay. Yeah, it looks to me like there are some, there's some availability close by based on these pictures. Bakers, okay, okay, that's all I have for.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hug.
Mr. President, I'm going to ask you if you would consider retracting your second so we can make a motion to lay this over for a week.
I will not do that, but I see Ms. Johnson has her light on next. We'll see what she has to say about that.
And Ms. Gardner, if you would come up there.
I saw your, your hand up.
Yeah, I'd just like to address the question of the food desert. We're blessed by grocery stores in our neighborhood, Bakers, Family Fair just closed, but we understand another grocery store is coming in right next door. So we have two grocery stores in our neighborhood and then a Hy-Vee fresh store just up the street. And, and yes, if you decide to lay it over, we would be happy to sit down and see what we can agree on and maybe go from there.
Okay, so I, so you're okay with, and the young lady over here?
Sure, yeah, we appreciate the suggestion.
Okay with, one week is going to give you guys enough time to figure out? Thank you.
Yeah, we'll do our best.
All right, thank you.
I don't think I was clear earlier on the location of where our house is. It's literally 100 feet from the store. People will park in front of our home, people will utilize our driveway. There is a lot behind there. If you looked directly behind the building, if they were to make parking, it would be maybe one or two parking spaces, and then there's a whole lot next to that and then a home. When you go back behind there, there's a little trail almost behind the houses between Mark Knab and 30th. Next to where the Motorcycle Bike Club is, they have built a fence and they have parking. I'm not sure they're going to be okay with people parking in that area. And then a block over is Dabney's, which is a, a family-owned business that has been there since I was a little girl. So, and where, I can tell you also with that bus stop being right there in front of 30th, I was 12 years old with my grandmother and we got into a car accident there because a bus was obstructing the view of 30th Street. So even though the best of intentions, they may have the best of intentions, through the history and what I have seen, that's what it's going to be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Gardner, just so we're clear, if we were to lay this over for one week, then you are then retracting your, your motion or your request to not recommend the approval of a liquor license to this store?
I guess the wording I would probably use would be setting aside for the time being, but that our opposition remains in place. You know, we, what immediately comes to mind is parking. Four Aces, when they added liquor, they committed to us, and I'm assuming they committed to you, that they would close at seven and not be open in the hours selling liquor when there's problems. And, and then the shooters. You know, that might be a bridge too far, I don't know, but we can at least have the conversation. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, because at the end of the day, then, we would be making a recommendation to the Liquor License Commissioner to approve this.
Okay. Yeah, you would, if you, if, we may come, we may, we may come in opposition because we may not be able to resolve our differences, and there may still be stipulations that you put on them and vote for or against over our objections or whatever, I don't know. But you see what I'm saying, where we'll meet with them, we'll talk, we'll see what we agree on, then we'll come back.
So as, as the neighborhood president, are you in agreement to lay this over, to allow that negotiation to take place versus us completely making a recommendation? Because my motion on the floor was to make a motion to not recommend.
Correct, correct, and we appreciate that, but yeah, we're fine.
Thank you. I just want to be clear on that.
Yep, thank you.
All right, so I will rescind my recommendation. Thank you, Ms. Milton, but I, I'm certainly capable of making what decision I need to make next. So I made a recommendation to not recommend and Mr. Festerson made a second that. So, Mr. Festerson, how do you feel about this?
Yes, if you're withdrawing your motion, I'll withdraw my second. I would say a bit reluctantly, only because I understand the logic of what we're trying to accomplish with a layover and maybe having some additional safeguards. But I do think there are times when opposition's okay for something like this. And for me, that happens from time to time, when I can't be convinced of the business plan and the actual site dimensions we just witnessed, and don't have confidence in how that'll, how that'll play out. And when we have neighborhoods with clear issues surrounding density, and I think we do have that in this situation. So it would take a very high bar for me to change my mind on what was my second for denial today, but I understand the method of thinking.
Okay, so I'll make a recommendation to withdraw my recommendation to deny the liquor license. So with that being said, I would then entertain the, the motion to lay this over one week to allow other healthy discussions to take place within the community and then make a decision at that time.
Okay, that motion is removed. Is there a substitute motion? Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you. All right, okay. I mean, all the issues that I raised aren't satisfied by whether or not single shooters or something less than 32-ounce single beer can sales would, that, the issues I raised would not be satisfied by those restrictions. So I understand there might be a substitute motion to lay this over, but I would agree. I was prepared to vote denial of this, understanding too what Councilmember Milton said, that it might end up being, and most probably will be, something worse for the neighborhood because those restrictions won't be there. But in good conscience, my argument was not based upon whether or not I would be, it would satisfy or make the, the issues better because of the building and the constraints of the building and the site for that activity.
Okay. Ms. Milton.
Keep repeating, and I think I made myself clear too. My concerns aren't just for single shooters. I was just being realistic with what we found in the past, that I would still like to see, if, if, if they're going to get their liquor license, I'd like to see restrictions. But I also agree that I think there's parking issues. I think there's issues with what's going to be inside the store. And so I'm for the one-week layover because maybe the owners have a plan that they just haven't really provided to us today, that provide those answers. So in addition to the neighborhood, it's not just about the liquor, it's not just about the, the single cans and the shooters. It's going to be about the whole layout, what's going to be done with the parking and everything else. I don't know whether that can be accomplished in one week. But maybe it can, because I also think the end result, I, I agree, President Festerson, I really think there should be times when based upon good cause, we can recommend a denial and it should be upheld. I'm just not confident that it will happen, so I'm just being a realist. So maybe the owners can take this time to really come back, show the neighbors what you're doing and see if it maybe can pass muster. Because again, if we were going to have a motion to deny, I'd probably vote yes on it today. I'm just afraid that the end result would be worse for, for everyone. So I'm willing to give it one week, but it's a pretty high bar. But maybe the owners with a little bit of time can come back, show the neighbors and show us next week.
I'll make a motion to lay over one week.
There's a motion to lay over and one week, for one week and a second? No further lights? Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
No.
Motion passed, five to two.
Thank you for your testimony, we'll see you next week.
Item 10, to consider a liquor license change of location application for Don Gabby Sports Bar's Class C liquor license to be located at 1919 Missouri Avenue, A's Communication.
Public hearing and vote on number 10 is today, proponents please.
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Jose Manuel Alferiz, owner of Cantina El Sol at 2332 South 24th. That's where it was located, I closed it up back in December. I want to transfer the license to where I have the restaurant, I have been running that for years. There over about six, overall like 25 years in South Omaha. And I want to transfer to that location of where I'm at now, their liquor license.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. There's a motion and a second to approve, roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thanks, good luck.
Item 11, to consider a liquor license addition application for Warhorse Casino Omaha, located at 6303 Q Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 11 is today, proponents please.
Good afternoon, my name is Walter Coffey. I'm the Vice President of Hospitality for Warhorse Gaming. And I come before you to request, in addition to the existing liquor license due to the expansion of the casino, that's going to be opening on the 22nd of April, approximately 76,000 more square feet of administrative and gaming space, two additional restaurants, and an addition to the parking. So we would like to have the addition to our current CK license.
Thank you. And your address for the record?
The address is 6303 Q Street.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Councilmembers, I'll bring to your attention, there's an amendment on this item as well. Mr. Hug, you're recognized.
I make a motion to amend item 11. Do I have to read the description?
Yeah, read that at the record, please.
Okay. Motion to amend item 11 for revised addition description of first-floor area of 317 feet by 151st feet and second-floor area of 118 feet by 104 feet.
Thank you.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, and I believe you're aware of that amendment, right?
I am, absolutely.
Great.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, there's a motion and a second to approve the amendment, roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
And then as amended. Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 12, to consider a complaint filed against Pacific Convenient Food Mart, located at 7444 Pacific Street for violations of the Nebraska Liquor Control Act. Is additional information for the complaint.
Public hearing and vote on number 12 is today, proponents please.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Noah Huber. My address is 1222 South 184th Circle, 68130. I am the property manager of both the 74 Pacific Plaza Building and the 7400 Building. Both owners are sitting directly behind me. Our neighbors to the west, Pacific Convenient Mart, have had, they sell shooters, nicotine products, hemp products, all that sort of stuff. We've had many homeless people being intoxicated. We had a few people lying out in our back alley directly across the street from. We had a few people lying out in our back alley directly across the street from the convenience store, or the convenient mart. We've had to call the police a few times to get these individuals banned and barred or escorted off, at least. We've had, especially our women, female tenants and their employees, have been concerned about going to their cars late at night because of the homeless loitering and just the whole situation there. There's a lot of litter, being littered, not just on their property, but on the properties of ourselves and our neighbors. You know, open containers, that sort of thing, people drinking in the alley, and just leaving their shooters, their small cans, whatever, vapes, nicotine, hemp products, just all over the place, making it a mess for us. And then finally, just one other thing. We did talk to someone in the city clerk's office who believes that this same owner was in violation of some laws and regulations in the St. Pies de Tenth area, and we believe that went to the Nebraska Supreme Court, in which they sided with the neighbors. So yeah, without anything else to add, if you have any questions for me?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
We may, thanks. Any other proponents today?
Good afternoon, council. My name is Mike Huber. I live at 1222 South 184th Circle, and I would just like to add, I am the owner of 74 Pacific Plaza, the retail strip center directly east from Pacific Convenient Mart. I would just like to add that prior to Pacific Convenient Mart occupying that real estate, we had a Subway store. We never had any issues whatsoever with debris, garbage, trash, homeless, et cetera. Since Pacific Convenient Mart opened, it has literally been a magnet drawing homeless people to the neighborhood. And like we've heard so many times in the previous discussions, we pick up and police hundreds of shooter... Empty shooter bottles and containers around our property. We've taken hundreds of photos of what this trash looks like and submitted them as part of this process. We've had tenants complain with homeless people entering their space, loitering inside their space. We've had shopping carts from Target at 72nd and Dodge. We've had people standing in the middle of their shopping carts, in the middle of our parking lot, screaming and yelling. We've had people up against the glass at storefronts, people eating, and these people are yelling at the patrons of our restaurants. It is truly a problem, because they can afford, by standing on a street corner and getting a dollar, they can afford to go buy a shooter. And it is truly a magnet drawing those people to our properties, and it is really a maintenance issue, that we have to pick these things up all the time. So we would just like your consideration, whatever you can do as a council, to recommend to the Liquor Commission or whomever, that perhaps Pacific Convenient Mart stopped selling shooters and drawing this kind of influence to our neighborhood. Our tenants are nervous, our people have approached their customers in the parking lot, asking for money, et cetera, and it is really a detraction to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents?
My name is Jerry Huber. I live at 319 North 129th Street. I, along with a couple of partners, own the 7400 Building, a 27,000-square-foot office building, rental property that's fully leased. We are two doors down from the Convenience Mart. We have seen that this little subdivision from Pacific Street north to Howard, two to three blocks long, has about a dozen properties. It's a little mixed-use area. It's come a long way in 15 years. There's no vacant properties. It was a blighted area 15 years ago. There's no vacancies, and no vacancies in the retail center or our office building. Several buildings have upgraded over the years. It's been really nice to see. The Furniture Mart made a major investment in the office building immediately to the north of ours, and yeah, it was a major investment. So the neighborhood overall is very healthy. We've had an issue the last few years, and it's an increase in foot traffic, okay? We've got no issue with vehicle traffic coming to the Convenience Mart. We've got no issue with that at all. But we have had steady increase of foot traffic coming from the... To the north, primarily, I think, from the Papio Creek area. We have, as has been mentioned, really hundreds of tiny shooter bottles on our property. We have loitering. One day, we had an individual, got a call at 7:00 in the morning from one of the women that are one of our women tenants, and there was apparently a homeless individual in our front foyer area. We've had people with shopping carts disoriented, and the police have come. Despite all that, we've, you know, it's... Yeah, despite that, we also in the neighborhood, we've got a lot of human services, and we really welcome them. There's a daycare center up the street. There's a center for the developmentally disabled, a few doors down from us, and we welcome those human services in our neighborhood. But this... The little shooters, I think, is really creating a safety risk to our tenants, and I do think it impacts the poor, and I think it impacts some of the vulnerable that live generally in our area. And so I'd ask today that you not only help protect our investment, but also help protect these vulnerable individuals.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents?
Michael Pulte, 2712 South 87th Avenue. I'm here with Testify Kenday, who's the owner of EBay LLC, which owns Pacific Convenient Food Mart. The first thing I'd like to present to the council is, my client feels a little ambushed by this complaint at this time. The first time we got notice of this was on the 6th, and now we're being called in front of the city council. There's been no prior complaints to my client about littering, or prior complaints about my client at this location regarding homeless people or other people loitering. Usually what happens, that I've seen in my practice, is somebody makes a complaint, and then if the complaint's legitimized, or if there's a police report or something like that happens, we go and have a constructive discussion in front of the law committee. But to have a formal complaint come like this, and we have to answer it five days later, is a kind of a particular ambush. I would also like to point out to the council that within a mile of my client's business, there's a come-and-go. There's a Megasaver. There's a Walmart. There's a Total Wines &amp; More. And many of these businesses also sell shooters. I get garbage from shooters in the parking lot of my office building. We've had homeless people and/or vagrants in the alley of my office building at 87th Ave and Center Street. So to characterize that certain individuals that might be going to the business, I don't dispute their reports. I don't dispute their reports. But to characterize that's caused by my business, they've got no way to prove that. They've got no way to prove that those individuals are coming to my client's business, and he's helping fuel their homelessness? There's no way to prove that. And in the complaints themselves, there's no way to prove most of the allegations that they're making. Do I agree with Mr. Huber about the shooters? Yeah, they're everywhere. They're everywhere. I have clients that have bars. They're a plague on bars, because people sneak those into bars, right? They're a plague on litter everywhere. But just to single out my client in this instance and say he's the cause of that, I don't think it's fair. And quite frankly, they're talking about... They were talking about shopping carts. My client doesn't have any shopping carts at his business. He doesn't have any. But what I will tell the council is that my client's willing to be a good neighbor, and if there's issues, if there's things that we can do to help with the problems that's occurring, okay, we're willing to have that discussion. But for us to come here today, five days after getting a complaint, I mean, we're going to be extremely defensive, and I think you can hear that in my voice. I'm here to answer any other questions. The owner is also here to answer any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents that want to speak today?
Yes, sir, Omaha City Council, Danny R. Johnson, the Johnson and Question Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. Now, I understand this young man's problem. It's no longer District 66 anymore in that area. Clancy has gone down on the corner down there. The Ranch Bowl is closed down there, and then you've got homeless on the street trying to get money, and then you've got all this disagreement with all these different folks. But the biggest understanding that I have run into in that area is that someone who put the new restaurant there on Pacific and got rid of the Boston Market up the street, and they got rid of Exarban. They say, why don't you folks bring the horses back and get them guys some jobs over there, and they'll stop harassing these other folks?
Any other opponents to number 12? Seeing none, public hearing's closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. I guess I'll start a question for our city clerk. There's a reference to a lawsuit. Are you aware of what that is?
I have no idea what that is referenced to, and I asked my staff, and they also do not know.
Okay, can I... Mr. Noah Huber, I guess, good afternoon.
Hello.
I got several questions, but first, what are you referencing? I guess I don't know about that.
That wasn't a direct reference exactly. It was more of a... When we talked to them over a year ago, I don't know if they remember for sure. We believe they mentioned something about that, and then we believe that they mentioned something about it going to the Supreme Court and being sided with there.
Okay. I just want to try to understand that, so... Okay, so when this was on our agenda, I had a meeting yesterday with our city attorney, who I'll have some questions for, and I'm sure several of us will. I've been on the council three and a half years, and I've never seen something like this come to us, and I'm thinking, gosh, did I miss something? But it was explained to me by my seasoned colleagues and staff that this is something that is rare, so I felt a little better about that. I did go out yesterday to the 7444 Pacific, and I walked around, I went inside just to get a feel. I know it used to be a Subway, I think, it was a Goodrich Dairy. And in fairness to the owner and his attorney here, I'm just curious... I want to be fair to everybody, and I always think of myself as a problem solver. And in order to solve a problem, I got to understand the issue. So you guys sent in, there was an attachment of 244 pages of shooters and trash and all these things. I will make note to you, behind the building, there's a communications vault on the northeast end of your building. You might want to call 811 to have them come out, because the lid is off there, and that communications underground vault is open. When were your pictures taken?
They've been taken over the past probably two years, roughly. We've been collecting evidence for a while.
The reason I ask about the vault is because when I looked through all those pictures, the vault at that time, the lid wasn't broken. That's just an observation that for safety issues, call. Can I ask you to call 811, or would you mind doing that, just to make sure that vault's covered? So looking at all the trash, and when I walked around yesterday, I didn't go up the alley. When you guys said the alleyway, is that to the east of his property, going up the west end of the plaza? Is that by head nods, is that where you're talking, the alley? Okay.
Yeah.
I didn't walk up there, but I walked around his property, and on a scale of 1 to 10, as far as trash, it wasn't bad. It was a 1 or maybe a 1.5. There's been a lot of wind, you know, stuff blows around. So when... This has been going on for the last two years. Have you reached out to the owner at all, have any of you?
We have gone into the store, but we didn't talk directly about this.
Okay, and again, I want to be fair to you guys and the owner here. Did you call the mayor's hotline when you had homeless people that you were concerned about, that were camping or kind of along those properties? Did you call the hotline? Because we do have a homeless services coordinator and a team that can go try to assist with that.
We've called, not the mayor's hotline, but we've called the police departments, both non-emergency and emergency number, and every time I talked about this, they always recommended me to call 911. So that's what I just... We just assume do for every time that happened.
Okay, and again, I'm not trying to be adversarial to you, I'm just trying to understand, because I didn't know about this issue until it came to our agenda, and this obviously is in my district. So did you ever think to call me as your council member to try to help you guys and help the business here, to try to resolve or problem-solve on this?
We did not call you, no.
Okay, and that's okay. I mean, you didn't have to do that, but I certainly would have tried to have helped, because in respect to council here, he used the term "they feel ambushed" on the timeframe on this. I would have certainly liked to have tried to get involved, to get parties together, to... In concerns of the safety of the people and the employees there and people that visit the plaza there, that there are some issues that needed to address, I certainly would have tried to have gotten involved to get people together and try to at least address the concerning issues. And you had mentioned foot traffic issues. What are you saying, that people are buying alcohol products and they're drinking on the premises, or what's going on?
Yeah, we've seen many countless homeless people walking up and down our back alley, going into the store, coming out, and then, you know, there's tons of shooters, which are sold in that store, and they're littered all over our alley. They're not just littered on their property, but in our alley, we've had to, you know, blow them over the curb, kick them away, or throw them away. We... I know you mentioned something about it being very clean while you were there, and I don't doubt that at all. One thing I will say about that is we have regular maintenance going up to clean after the shooters and all those things, but he has reached out to me multiple times and told me, hey, I cleaned up more shooters, I cleaned up more tobacco.
Sorry, who reached out to you and said that?
Our maintenance contractor, who cleans up.
Your maintenance guy, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, and in fairness, I was there yesterday. I drive by there, I'd been frankly given much thought until I saw this. So can I... Couple of questions for Mr. Pulte.
Yes, sir.
When I was... Again, I was just there observing yesterday. Are there cameras around the buildings I saw?
Yes.
What is there, like eight or 10 cameras you have on the building? You can come up to if you would like.
Yes, I have cameras all around the building.
Okay, and who monitors those?
Me.
Okay, and... Oh, I'm sorry. What's your name and address for the record?
My name's Testify Kenday, 120 South 68th Street, Omaha.
So have you... How often do you clean your grounds, and are you concerned with the folks that are here of goodwill, there are business owners like you that have concerns about people coming in and out and buying products and disposing of them or loitering? What is your answer to that?
I wish they'd come and address this to me, but he said he mentioned, I mean, he'd been in the store, but I wasn't aware of anything. My employees should tell me, and I'm always there, too. I'm willing... I mean, we clean the store, it's not every day, every hour, every two hours, we step out and clean, and once or twice a day, we go to the alley, and we go to both streets clean. And once or twice a day, we go to the alley, and we go to both streets clean, even across the street, we clean. I don't know what he's talking about, because this is something I'm not aware of it. I'm not, I didn't get any prior complaint, nobody complained. I don't know what this issue is, but I am willing to work with them. I am willing to keep clean, and whatever concerns they have, I am willing to address that. But regarding homeless and stuff, homeless everywhere, there's more homelessness on 72nd and Pacific. So I don't have any control on that. Do they come to my store? They might, but there's not many on my store. They don't hang out, they don't, we don't, first level, I don't allow them to hang out outside or anything. And we monitor the store around, as I said, I have eight cameras outside to each angle. So we watch them, so we watch everybody. It's not only for them, it's for our concerners. We don't want, my customers been begged, many, so we don't even let them stand outside at all.
Okay. You can sit down now. I appreciate your answer. Mr. Noah Huber, can you come back? And there's a lot of lights on, so I want to be totally fair to my colleagues. I'm just curious, would you, and I don't know if this is your dad and your uncle, you're probably all related, so.
Yes.
Okay. Would you guys be willing to sit down with the business owner here and just have the discussion? Hey, here's our concerns? Because you guys did a good job of spelling this out. And again, had I known about that, I would have been glad to go grab a coffee with you guys, with you as well, to try to at least bridge any issues. And heck, sometimes, as this body knows, issues become irresolvable, and then you deal with it at that time. But is that something you would at least be open to?
I personally would. I would have to talk to my dad and uncle.
Okay. So I appreciate that, at least on the record, you guys can talk about that. I want to defer right now, Mr. President, because I know my colleagues have a lot of questions, maybe. And I'll probably have a couple follow-up as well, so thank you, Mr. President.
If I may say one thing with permission, thank you. He talked about the, there would be no homeless on the property. I will say that the ban on bar form we had probably a year ago, we had the officers, both officers, collect his name, Jeffrey something, I don't want to say his last name for privacy concern, but it was Jeffrey, and officers who I also, I won't name them, but I have their name and badge number here. They gave me their info. So we have it documented. It was probably 20 feet just east of the store on our back alley. He'd been passed out drunk for, I don't know how long, two days probably, is what our tenants said, two or three days. And police said the same thing, he was drunk, you know, just loitering.
Also, the last thing, is my mic so on. Sorry. Is that good? Sorry. The last thing I'll say, again, thanks, everybody, for your patience, is the homeless service coordinator team, they're not perfect, but they work hard. And when we get, if I get those complaints, I send them right over to Tamara and her team. And I follow up with them to say, hey, have you gone out? What are you finding? Have you gotten? Some people don't want help, but at least the mental health professionals can try to intervene to help the souls that are homeless, that are struggling with addiction, to try to at least get these folks some help. So that's why, again, I'm not criticizing you guys. Those are the tools and the things that I want to try to help with, and that I'm hoping that I still can with this issue before us today. So thanks again for your patience, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
President, I think I'm going to start with Ryan Weeson. If Ryan could come down, I have a couple of procedural questions to ask.
Ryan Weeson, City Attorney.
So Ryan, as Councilman Bagley pointed out, this is an incredibly unique and rare resolution that we have to consider. Can you, and there are certain timelines that need to be met, and we're limited to certain actions, but we are required to take an action, I believe. Could you walk us through procedurally what this resolution calls for and allows us or requires us to do?
Yes. This hearing is on the council's agenda pursuant to Nebraska revised statute 53-134.04. And we've never had a hearing pursuant to that statute at the council before, at least in my experience advising council on liquor matters. What that hearing provides is it allows any five residents of the City of Omaha to file a complaint with the city council, which alleges that an entity that has a retail liquor license is violating either the Nebraska Liquor Control Act or the rules and regulations of the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission. Now, that statute requires us to set the matter for hearing within 10 days of receiving the complaint. So I understand the frustration of the license holder, we had to put it on the agenda within those 10 days. The statute does not require the city council to resolve the matter within 10 days at today's hearing. The council could lay over and continue the hearing. It does, however, require the council to resolve the matter fully within 30 days of the filing of the complaint. So we do have a little bit of time. We don't have a lot of time.
And I'm sorry to interrupt, but what was the date of filing?
I'll check with the city clerk on that. I think it was maybe eight days ago, seven days ago. Okay, she's going to confirm that and then get back to you.
And then, okay, I'm sorry, keep going, because I think there are four actions that we could take.
Yes. The statute itself, unlike other provisions of the Liquor Control Act, doesn't specifically specify a remedy or an action that the council can take. So we kind of have to piece it together. And that essentially boils down to four actions. The council could determine that there is not sufficient evidence that it has been presented today to establish a violation of either the Nebraska Liquor Control Act or the rules and regulations of the Liquor Control Commission, and could find by resolution that there's an allegation of noncompliance has not been found and dismiss the complaint. That's option number one. Option number two is the council could find that there has been sufficient evidence presented to it today to find that a violation of either the Liquor Control Act or the rules and regulations of the Liquor Control Commission have been violated. And the council could require the applicant to submit a long-form application. Now, that resolution would be a long-form request to the Liquor Control Commission today. It would go down to the Liquor Control Commission. The commission would receive the request, require the license holder to submit a brand-new application for a retail liquor license. That would go through the normal process that every other liquor license goes through, including being sent back to the city council for a recommendation of either yes or no at a later date. The third option available to the city council would be that the city council could find that there was sufficient evidence to essentially establish a pretty serious or severe violation of either the Liquor Control Act or the Liquor Control Regulations, and could, the council could cancel the liquor license. And then the fourth and final option would be the most egregious violation that you could think of has been found through the evidence that's been presented today, and the council could revoke the liquor license. Both suspension and revocation would be subject to review and approval by the Liquor Control Commission. And those are really reserved for the most egregious violations of the Liquor Control Act.
Okay. Is there anything else we need to know about the procedure or this?
Nothing comes to mind at this time, but if there are other questions, I'm happy to address them.
All right. And I might later on, but thank you, Ryan. I think that's important, that not only, we as a council understand what's before us today, but also for both parties to understand, too. So I do agree with Mr. Polk that, you know, I could hear it in your voice, and rightfully so, I think, when you said that you were, you know, kind of maybe taken aback by the, you know, the quick action that you have to take on behalf of your client. And I agree with Councilman Bagley that, you know, I think a lot of this could have been resolved by picking up the phone and calling the owner and just sitting down and trying to resolve it. And I would tell you, Noah, with all due respect, it's not fair to come up and make a baseless accusation against someone, then confirm you have no facts to back it up. I think that, I'm not calling on you to come up. I think that hurts your credibility. And I don't think that, I don't think that that's a good position for you to be in. I really think that, as Councilman Bagley said, that this could have been kind of, you know, it's like neighbors. Talk across the fence, figure out what the problem is, come up with a solution, try to resolve it in that manner. And if that doesn't work, then maybe you fold, in this case, the, I'll say, the nuclear option of coming and with this type of a resolution, that is extremely rare. It just, it doesn't seem, it doesn't seem sensible or neighborly, if you will. So now, Ryan, I will ask you to come back up. If we have within, do we have a date yet on that?
I did, yeah, we found it. The complaint was originally received on February 7th. However, we needed additional information, and that information was submitted to my office on March 4th.
So are we calling March 4th the beginning of the 30 days?
That's my understanding.
Yes.
Okay. Ryan, are there any other, I mean, if, I would be of the mind to dismiss this and maybe have everyone go back to square one and go back to talking across the fence and seeing if a resolution can't be worked out between the two parties. That would be my, that's where I would be today. Now, if you did say that you had some other additional language in there about the dismissal, is there, is what I just said an option for, you said there's some evidence, obviously, that's been presented, excuse me, presented, but is there too much evidence to say that it just doesn't warrant, or a dismissal couldn't be one of those considerations?
Well, ultimately, that's kind of your guys', the seven of your decisions. You're essentially sitting as a judge, and you're weighing the evidence. And what, it's what attorneys call a preponderance of the evidence. Is there 50.1% of the evidence that weighs in favor of either party? You know, one thing that the council may want to consider is there's been a lot of discussion about airplane shooters. But there are many other locations in the area that likely sell airplane shooters. I think there's a Phillips 66 a block away. There's a brand-new come-and-go just like two or three blocks down the street at 72nd and Pacific. Also, Total Wine and Spirits just down the street. So there should be some sort of evidence in the record that you can tie the complaints to this particular location and not the other retail licenses in the neighborhood. And that might be something that the council may want to exploit, explore further, that the parties may want to, I say "parties" for lack of a better word, the proponents and the opponents, may want to present further evidence on for the court's consideration. Ultimately, you have to make the determination, has the evidence that I've received today given me the confidence to establish that this particular retail license premises is selling these particular bottles that are ending up on other people's property in violation of the license? And do I have enough evidence to make that conclusion today?
And I don't disagree, it's probably likely that at least some, if not the majority, could have come from this operation, but we don't know that with any degree of certainty If there was something else I was going to ask Mr. Polk, but now for the life of me, I can't remember what the question was, so I might have to ask that later on. But, I mean, that's kind of where I would stand today, is I would like to see this kind of resolved amicably or in a neighborly way between the two parties to see if they can't come to a conclusion, or come to some sort of agreement to, for cleanup or to take responsibility for, before it would come back to us in maybe this form or another form.
Thank you. Ms. Milton?
Thank you. And I would argue that it wouldn't even matter whether or not they proved that the shooters came from this location. Our choices today are to do a denial along for, cancel or revoke a liquor license. And in order to cancel or revoke somebody's liquor license, we've done it with Rain Lounge, where we had shootings, we had multiple police cars, multiple tavern reports. I mean, I think there was multiple assaults. And we did move to try and cancel that, and obviously, the liquor commission overturned that and put them on a probation. The law committee gets, has people in, in fact, just this morning, we meet regularly. We call people who have liquor licenses in who have a lot bigger issues than just garbage. Sometimes it is garbage, and we're able to talk to them and resolve it. But we have places that have multiple tavern reports. They don't have one single tavern report. There may be a homeless issue, and I think we have that in downtown Omaha. In fact, we have a hotel and some other places that are asking for our help with homeless. I'm certainly not going to revoke their liquor, their liquor license because there's a homeless problem outside or near their business. I think this is something that, at the very least, call the council member, call the city clerk, and could have said, is there anybody on the city council that deals with this? And I'm sure she would have said the law committee. This is very rare. I hope it remains rare, because I don't want this to now be, oh, you can get five people together, go down to the city council, and every Tuesday, we're going to have neighbors complaining against, about neighbors for something like this. That should have been dealt with, with at least meeting with a phone call. You can also call, there are mediators out there. There's a place called the Concord Center that you could call, and you could ask them to call the owners of the other property to come in, and you guys could attempt to mediate. I think what you were asking us to do is say that they are banned from having the single shots. We actually can't do that. That's not one of the options. We don't have the authority to do that. I think you probably heard from our, on the Y family convenience, like we said, we could ask them to agree at the time we're issuing the liquor license to conditions, but that's not what we have in front of us. So what you're asking us to do, we don't even have the authority to do. So we're spending a whole lot of time on something that, in all honesty, we have to, I think, number one, there's not enough evidence here to cancel or revoke, but I don't think that's what the petitioners are asking us to do. If you are and I'm wrong, there absolutely is not evidence to do it. So I think what the petitioners are asking for, we don't have the authority to do. I hope that maybe the parties can get together. It sounds like they're more than willing to. Mr. Polk, I completely understand that the four-day notice or whatever you have actually flies in the face of due process, in my opinion. If I didn't think, if I thought there maybe even was a scantilla of evidence, I'd lay it over to give you more time. But I think what I'm going to do is do a motion to deny.
A motion to deny in a second. Mr. Hug, you're recognized.
Mr. Huber, would you come back up? No, the other one. The first gentleman, that guy.
My name is Jerry, by the way, just to clarify.
Gerald, actually.
Yes, it is.
We'll keep it formal. What I want you to walk away, you and your family to walk away with today, is the understanding that what I'm hearing and what I have heard from my peers is that we are all here to help you. I believe you, and I believe your family. I'm familiar with this neighborhood. I have family that live just a block up the street and have for 30 years. I have witnessed the deterioration of this neighborhood, and I'm sure you have, too, and I'm sure that's why you're here today.
A deterioration? Well, it depends on how you define the neighborhood, but...
Let me be more, let me be more clear. With the experience you're having with the alleged homelessness?
Yeah.
And the increase in litter, I would classify that as deterioration. Because it's gotten a lot worse than it was 10 years ago or 20 years ago.
And I, well, it's a lot worse in the last few years, the last three, four years. We've always had, we've always had a handful of individuals, okay, that are indigent, whatever their needs might be. And we certainly, believe me, we empathize with them. But in the last three to four years, we have seen a steady, significant increase, okay? I can go back 15 years, and I can go back 10. We didn't have, we didn't have this problem 10, 15 years ago.
No, and I agree with you. I've witnessed it, I've seen it.
Yeah.
So I want you to walk away here today, you and your family, with an understanding that we are here to help you.
Okay.
We're also here to help this business owner, too. So I would strongly encourage you and your family to walk away here today with a willingness to work with this owner. And I'm going to stick my neck out here on the line, because this young gentleman right here is going to correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think I'm wrong. If this gets turned down today, and if after you spend some time working with this gentleman right here...
right here, I don't think there's any time limit on you being able to come back and file this complaint again a second time. Am I right?
Ryan Weason, Deputy City Attorney. I, I would concur that Nebraska Revise Statute 53-134.04 does not put any restriction on the number of times that you could, citizens could file a complaint or the time limit between complaints that could be filed.
And that's, thank you, and I was pretty sure I was right on that. Thank you for confirming that. So let's hope that this is a beginning, of a new beginning, where we can all move together in a positive fashion. And if nothing bears fruit of that, you're always welcome to come back with another complaint. I want to thank you and your family for taking the time to come up here today and bring this to our attention. This is definitely the type of stuff that we want to hear about, we want to see about. But please try to work with the owner.
Thank you, and, and we will do that. Yeah, we're happy to reach out to them, see if, see if there can be a resolution to it.
I'm optimistic that something will come forward, but thank you and it's good seeing you again.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Polk, can you come up, please? Thanks. You heard from my colleagues and I, as, as much I bring it to the table, I also learn a lot from my colleagues every day and our staff, and Ryan's a great attorney, that really did a good job explaining to me and everybody here today how this process works and how rare it is. Would you be willing to exchange your information on behalf of your client with the Huber family? Thank you. And I, I want to support my colleagues, Melton and Harding on this for the dismissal, not because I don't care about your complaint, but in my view, it's something, again, hindsight's 2020, it's a learning experience for everybody, that hopefully getting together, you can resolve the challenges, and you can call my office. If there's issues with homeless camps, there are some souls out there that need help, we all know that. We can try our best to give them the guidance and help and the outreach through communication. Had I known this was there, I would have gone out and looked myself, that's what I do, and I will try to help, but please get together with counsel here outside after, and thank you at least for helping me understand a process I didn't know. Now I know what I can do to try to help, and that's getting you guys together and get through the issues and challenges that you can, calling my office or 911, obviously, if there's a threat for anybody's public safety, you call 911. But if there's homeless camps and those issues, please call 444-5525. And you can email me at danny.bagley, it's on the website. And I'll be glad to do anything I can to help because I want your business to do well, I want the strip mall there and people to feel safe that go there. So I appreciate you today, at least exchanged that information, and I want you to know why I'm voting to dismiss, not because I don't care, but it hasn't met the threshold that, in my view, it warrants anything beyond we heard, we understand, but we think it can be resolved through communication. Okay, thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Ms. Melton, I believe you have a substitute motion to make for terminology reasons.
I do, I think I said deny and I mean dismiss. Sub motion to dismiss.
Motion to dismiss in a second. Note for the lights, roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thanks for your testimony.
Item 13, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for South Farm Replat 3 located southwest of 144th and Pacific Streets, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 13 is today. Proponents, please.
My name's Joe Flaxbeard, 14710 West Dodge Road, here on behalf of the applicant. This is a, the preliminary plat portion of a minor plat for part of Hartwood Preserve, shuffling around some lot lines. Hopefully, very soon you'll see a final plat and a major amendment to mixed-use development agreement to accompany this. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion a second to approve, roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 14, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for McGardell Ridge located southwest of 192nd and Nida Streets, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 14 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Kevin Sassy, Shore Elliott Hendrickson, 15750 West Dodge Road, Suite 304, here to answer any questions. I'm the engineer on the project.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. There's a motion a second to approve, roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 15, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Sunrise located northeast of 195th Street and Stone Avenue, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 15 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Randy Kuchak with Lampard Nielsen, 14710 West Dodge Road, here on behalf of the applicant, Woodland Homes Inc., here to answer any questions you may have on this project today.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Motion a second to approve, roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Items 16 and 17 can be considered together for Scowler Replat 1 located northeast of 28th Avenue and Deer Park Boulevard. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items 16 and 17 are resolutions to approve the preliminary plat and final plat.
Public hearing and vote on items 16 and 17 are today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Joe Doutlofs with TD2, 10836 Old Mill Road, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Senator Senowicki, welcome.
Mr. President. Members of the council, John Senowicki, 2451 South 27th Avenue. Had a very frustrating summer last summer. And it got doubly frustrating when I learned that the, all the activity going on in Lot 2, and my remarks are exclusive of Lot 2, all the activity on Lot 2 was illegal and unlawful. And the amount of dust was incredible. It was, it was the great Dust Bowl of Sheelytown of 2024. It was incredible. So I didn't know they weren't supposed to have been operating, but they were operating pretty much all year, from March through November, when they got a second stop work order, and they pretty much obliterated all the conditions of the issue, of the special use permit. Dust suppression. They were supposed to have, I was promised, as I talked to the guys, I was promised about water suppression of the dust. Their property is about 80 feet from my back, from my back property line. I never did see a water gun the entire summer. I'm not saying it may have been there, but I also provided, all of you, I believe I provided you documents that have videos, it's pretty evident there was no, no dust suppression going on. And it resulted in an incredible, an incredible amount of dust. The videos I sent you don't give you, don't give the amount and degree and depth of dust justice. They successfully attained a separation waiver, and very specific to that separation waiver was that they were to crush concrete in a very specific, limited area, and they violated that. They actually crushed closest to the residential area rather than furthest what the stipulations were of the, of the separation waiver, a blatant violation of that. They were supposed to have the truck paths paved, and this was probably more, more dust resulted from this than the actual crushing. The, the heavy equipment and trucks going through this raw dust in the middle of summer, I cannot explain to you how much dust came from that activity alone, not to mention the illegal crushing. They were supposed to get an air quality permit. I've been in contact with Omaha Air Quality, they never got any permit, and they never got any documents from them. They're supposed to track their suppression efforts, their suppression machinery, they're supposed to collaborate all that machinery. Omaha Air Quality hasn't gotten anything from them, other than that they have an application and the, the public comment time is open now, but Omaha Air Quality did not receive one thing from these guys, nothing. So, so what they did, what they did was crush concrete, pollute my neighborhood with no oversight. If I would have known that they weren't supposed to have been doing that, I would have been, oh, sorry, would have been a little bit more vocal. This replat, this replat was supposed to be completed, as I understand it, before they started operating, but guess what? They beat you by a year. They started operating in March of 2024. We're in March of 25. So I'm sorry, but I used to serve on oversights and all that. The degree and depth of lack of accountability and irresponsibility is just off the charts. And I met with these folks before they moved into the neighborhood. They looked at me without blinking and said, you won't get any dust, so the noise will be minimal. I'm not, I'm not even getting into the noise and the truck traffic because, you know, I know I've got limitations on my time, but I'm talking about the dust, the pollution, which is, when you crush concrete, there's pollutants, there's pollutants involved. So they crushed without even notifying Omaha Air Quality. And they crushed without any attention to the due process for, for Omaha citizens that were involved in a special use permit. So I know this isn't technically related to a replat, but my God, there's got to be some level of accountability with this kind of activity in our Omaha neighborhoods. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other opponents that want to speak today?
Hi, my name is Gail Schnatz, and I live at 2754 Dean's Circle, Omaha, 68105, and I do live tatty corner from John, and we've had these issues all last summer. I mean, we had a meeting a couple months, like before Christmas sometime, I think it was, Ron Hug was there, he was up the Southeast Precinct, and I thought all these things were laid to rest, and everyone kind of voiced their opinions, but the, the dust and dirt is just horrible. I mean, these guys have done a nice job with the fencing and the things they have done to make it look nice, but that doesn't account for the horrible dust. And the issues I've already always been having too is, and these were all addressed, spot up, is the fact that I live just west of 27th Avenue off Dean, and I'm on the corner, and so I have to mow that whole half block along the street, which I've done for 20-plus years that I've lived there. Now, I, I mow and I'm constantly shooting rocks. This morning I found a big, the trucks have been going through again, I don't know what they're doing, but I found a big metal pipe laying on my sidewalk down there. The stuff falls off these trucks, and I hit these rocks, they go shooting, kills my mower. The dust is horrible, and the other thing too is a residential area, and we have kids, we have people out walking and walking their pets, we have kids getting on and off school buses, and these trucks just fly through there. That's my biggest concern. And it's 25, and they, they do like 45, 50 through there, and that's why this stuff's flying off the backs of these trucks. I mean, we're talking cement trucks, side dumpers, dump trucks, just loaded with stuff, and even whether they're loaded or not, they fly through there. But the main thing is this, this dust has just been an issue. I mean, I used to, I mean, I can go like three days and I'm constantly dusting, dust off my window sills, I mean, it's horrible. And I know those houses down there are built like back in the late 1800s, you know, 1880s, whatever, and, you know, plaster, it's bad enough, you know, when the trucks rumble through, you know, I'm sure, but it's just the dust coming from the plant itself doesn't help at all. So I don't know if anything can be done about it, but I'm just letting you know that it is an issue, and I'm tired of picking rocks out of my yard or along the street there and on the sidewalk, and if something can be done about it, it'd be great, but that's what I have to say. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Any other opponents that want to speak today?
We see manage 2709 Dewey Avenue. I do not appreciate the pollution that the opponents are talking about, the dust and the debris. And I've been down in that area, which is mostly zone, industrial, light industrial, next to residential. And there's no, like, relief that you're providing in South Omaha, when we know that you have a large industrial area and you want people to go home and live their lives and pay their taxes, yet they come forward and complain about pollution, you know, and this could be like as simple as complaining to code violation. So maybe this is not the time to complain about these things, but the area is, I think, like transitional in zoning. So if you could look at that and relief, have, have relief for the business owners and the economy that you want to happen there, but also for the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I've just about had my fill of hearing everything the city's not doing. I know you're getting ready to do my neighborhood with tearing up Saddle Creek Road. I wonder if I'm going to have concrete dust and trucks speeding through the neighborhood and having to clean my window sills and worried about glass in the yard. But before you do that, maybe you ought to clear up the Walnut Hill area. It's worse than any area I've seen in Omaha. Thank you, Pete, you don't interrupt anybody else. I hope you're voted out real fast. Thank you very much, sir.
Stay on topic and you'll be fine. Any other opponents today, please? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
I have a question for Mr. Fanslaw. Under the, I know we're here on the plat, which is different, and I think maybe are the complaints, could these be addressed under the special use permit so that if they're not operating with air quality and things like that, could the special use permit be at risk for being revoked?
Dave Anzel, City Planning, the short answer to that is yes. This plat is part of a condition for the approval of the special use permit. So council approved the special use permit last February.
Right.
A condition of that approval was this plat that's before you today. For whatever reason, it's taken the applicant this long to get it to us, so once staff, once we receive the approvals from council, we can go ahead and issue the, actually issue the special use permit that was approved over a year ago. The activity, the activity that Mr. Senowicki described was happening without our knowledge. When we received those complaints, we sent notices and talked to the operator about what they were doing, and what I understand, the latest information I have available to me anyway, is that eventually they stopped doing what was causing the issues. If there's new complaints, then we'll surely look into. If there's new complaints, then we'll surely look into those. But like I said, the use permit technically hasn't been issued yet because this was the last condition of that use permit.
So they shouldn't be operating at this point because they don't have a special use permit?
Correct. From what I understand, they stopped crushing and were just bringing product onto the site. But they weren't actually doing the scrap and salvage, which is the crushing of the concrete.
And so those reports could still be made now if there was proof and that, that could be a violation of that special use permit. And it could result in having it revoked.
Well, yes, it would be in violation of the zoning code right now. Once the use permit is approved, then if the dust and the nuisance to the neighborhood is still happening, yes, that is a valid. If it's a complaint, we would make sure that it's valid. And at some point, yes, the council could ask for the use permit to come back before them to be revoked.
Okay. Cause I, I think I, I hear what Mr. Sinewicki and the neighbor, and I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, but they were saying, and I think it's always very concerning when I hear that a business is operating when they shouldn't be.
I would agree.
And, and you know, I'm glad they stopped, but it sounds like they were doing it for quite a while. I don't think it has anything to do with the plat. I also have to be mindful for what I'm voting on today. I see that we did pass, we passed the special use permit on February 13th of 2024. Then it was a minor amendment was approved, June 14th, 2024. But the permit hasn't been issued yet. I, I would, I think the neighbors should be aware, they should make any complaints about what's going on to the city and I hope the city kind of will provide some special attention to this, especially since they've proven to have violated the rules before.
If you're looking for a head nod, yes, you have that, yes.
Thank, thank, thank you for the head nod, Mr. Fanslaw. That is what I was looking for.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Hug.
I think we have a representative from the company here. Would you like to come up and comment?
Lance Paulson with Crushing It, 20305 in Patton Street in Gretna. I'm the CEO of Crushing It, the owner of the, or operator of the, the crushing operation. It's true, the replat is part of our special use permit. That has been a long process, getting the surveys done and so forth. We began to crush material in approximately April of last year as a way of trying to comply with the requirements of the special use permit. We're required to put down about 40,000 square feet of paving, build a fence roughly a half a mile long that goes around the property, tear down the grain tower that was there on the property. A number of improvements like that, sidewalk along the right away. All that took some time, but we needed to move material. We made the assumption that we could crush that material while we were moving it out of the way to make these improvements. Clearly we did not operate very well. What John Sinewicki has stated is true. There was a lot of dust. Our dust suppression, which, which we successfully operated in Gretna for the last seven years, next to neighbors, was not working. We had a new crew there, did not operate it properly. That's falls squarely on us. When notified that we were to stop, we didn't even believe it when we were first notified. We had to be notified a second time within a couple of weeks. And we did stop. That was in the end of August, I believe, first of September. So we did operate from May to September, trying to make room for these improvements. Since then, we've not operated. We've not hauled in, we've not hauled out. We've been in there building the fence, doing the paving, tearing down the tower, making those improvements to comply. Our air quality permit isn't just to fill out the boxes and turn it in. It is in the process of public hearing right now. It ends up on the 24th of March is when that will be acted on. That does require dust suppression. We will need to comply or we will be forced to shut down. So there are plenty of opportunities. As I witnessed in your previous liquor license applications, you encouraged cooperation with the neighbors. You encouraged communication. We have been in communication with the neighbors. John has my number. I know John, we talked in the very beginning, I'm the one that eyeballed him. I don't recall the conversation quite the way he did, but clearly dust control is a responsibility of ours. And we'll, we'll do that or we'll be forced to shut down. So in no way are we trying to slime by anything or avoid anything. There's really no advantage to us putting ourselves at risk after the investment we've made in that property. I would encourage any of you to drive down 480 and look to the, to the east and you'll see it. You won't see a grain tower.
I'm just going to floor continue. Lance, you know that I'm friends with John Sinewicki's family. That's full disclosure. I've known John and his family for many, many years. I consider him a very good friend. I've also gotten to know you and Ryan. And I, I respect you guys for trying to do the right thing. I approached you about wanting to do a town hall and there was absolutely zero hesitation whatsoever. And, and I appreciate that. But through our communication, you expressed there was some frustration with getting this vacation put together. Can, can you kind of elaborate on what happened with that? There was a delay in getting this before us?
I'm sorry, say that again, Ron, delay in what?
Okay. If, if I remember correctly, in our previous conversations, we had talked about some frustration with the delay in getting this vacation order before us. Cause this was part of the special use permit. This had to be done.
Correct.
But was there some, some external complications with getting this before us?
Yes, we, we had surveys done in the beginning before we even purchased the property. We submitted the replat information and Joe might be able to elaborate more details. That was done through TD Squared. Some sewer easements did, did not get shown on the survey properly once they were submitted to Public Works. That had to all be reversed back in November and redone. That took place over the holidays. Things have just drug out for whatever number of reasons. Had to be redone and then on the agendas.
Okay. Getting back to my conversations with you and Ryan about the neighbors, including Mr. Sinewicki, I, I think I made it clear that I wanted to make sure John was happy.
Sure.
And you're more, you're, you, you guys are more than willing to sit down with John and the other neighbors and to continue to work out any problems, any issues, any concerns. Correct?
Absolutely.
I'm not putting words in your mouth.
No, sir.
Okay.
Anytime.
Okay. If, if I can be of any help and assistance in brokering a, a meeting, arranging another town hall, whatever we have to do, I'm here to do it. I want to see that John's happy. I want to see all the neighbors are happy. And, and I know the family that lives immediately to the south, they speak glowingly of you. And I, I don't know what happens on the north side, but you know.
What, what you want, what John wants is what we want. We have no advantage to violating any of the rules, whether it's city or, or air quality or anything. We, we can operate successfully. We have in other locations, we will in this location. We made, we made a misjudgment when we started clearing the area by crushing it. Should not have done that. But once, once we're allowed to operate, which is after the replat and after the air quality permits approved, then you have the hammer. Then you can come in and say, you're violating the, the zone, you're violating the air quality, you're violating public nuisance. You can throw whatever hammer you want at us. Right now, we've not been, had, we've not had the chance to operate properly.
Thank you. Thank you. Senator Sinewicki, I saw you wanted to add one thing. Please come down, I'll, I'll recognize you.
So I know you don't swear people in, John Sinewicki, 2451 South 27th Avenue. You don't swear testimony in, but I think you, there's an expectation that they tell you the truth. And you could, welcome to my world, but putting up with this outfit all through 2024. What Lance just told you is they quit operating after that shutdown notice in August. But you'll see a Facebook posting from his company's Facebook on October 8th, 2024. Quote, "Our downtown Omaha yard will be temporarily closed beginning today, October 8th, until next Wednesday, October 16th." And it goes on to describe what they are going to do. They were operating. They got a stop work order and they ignored it. And further evidence that they ignored that August stop work order is they got another stop work order in November. So what were they doing between August and November? Secondly, I have an email right here. This gentleman right here, Lance, was informed to stop working on July 24th. So hear me out on this. I was experiencing the great Shidley Town Dust Bowl during this time. And he ignores this kind of warning, hey Lance, you gotta stop working. It's from this gentleman right here to Lance. "I received a call from Mike Carter this morning and he advised to stop operating until the following conditions are complete." That was ignored. That was ignored. And then the stop work order from these gentlemen at planning was ignored. So I mean, come on. How, so my family's been in the liquor business for 60 years. And I know that if you repeatedly and consistently violate conditions, you're gone. I mean, what's the, what's the, the only difference here is this is more serious. Cause you're talking about pollution. You're talking about polluting Omaha neighborhoods. This is just more serious. So I'm sorry, I'm a little frustrated. You could probably tell. It's been a long summer putting up with this stuff in my neighborhood. But I'm, I really need relief. And that's not just this, let's see how it goes now. They operated illegally for, illegally for a year, ladies and gentlemen. Come on. There, there's, there's got, the hammer's got to come down now. There's no way that you can let this outfit go forward. I, I mean, it's, it's your decision. It's your decision. But their track record is terrible. And I, I'm like 85 feet from their boundary and from my backyard and I can testify to that. I got all this information. I got these emails, if you want to see them, I got additional emails as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
You bet. Council members, are there further questions? Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
And I'm wondering if everybody is thinking like me. I, I agree with, I agree with Senator Sinewicki. I mean, I, I do agree that somebody was operating when they shouldn't have been operating and then there's, there's just no repercussions. And I, I assume there's nothing, Mr. Fanslaw, they can't be ticketed, fined or anything when, when there was a stop work order issued and it wasn't followed? What are the, what's the normal course of action for that?
Noticing them, right? And unfortunately, sometimes we have to do it a few times, but short of my people carrying guns and badges and going to the building east of here, that's about the limit of what we have. So we do our best, they did eventually quit and we're trying to move forward with them.
Okay, so and there's, there's no ramifications at this point that, at least that your department can do. If they continue to operate, I assume you'd get law enforcement involved.
We could, yeah.
But they ended up stopping?
Correct.
Because I get, I get the frustration. It just seems like they get away with it. But at this point then saying, well, we're just going to shut their entire business down for good. And the cost of that, I think would, that, that may be a penalty that's too harsh. But I get, I mean, I, I get what Mr. Sinewicki is saying and I, maybe that's something we need to think about and revise is that if business owners are in violation, that maybe the planning department is given a little more teeth to be able to fine or assess fees or things like we do for weeds and litter and sidewalk violations. I think your department's the only one that maybe doesn't have those, that ability. And maybe, maybe you should. So I think it's something to talk about. So, and, and I don't know why everybody is silenced, but I think we're all thinking the same way. We really do feel like this business really kind of got away with a lot over the summer and the neighbors suffered from it.
Thank you, Mr. Bigley.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Paulson?
Senator Sinewicki referenced in the email. And when I'm listening to the senator, the thought in my head is you guys knew you should have stopped and you didn't. Why didn't you?
Frankly, I didn't realize, number one, that we were violating the rule. I thought we had the opportunity to clear that area. So it just, I mean, it made, I didn't have any place to push the material to get it ready, other than to crush it, was my mindset. That was my judgment. When I received that email, I thought there must be some more notice than that. We get a lot of informal advice or recommendations from, from people. I thought there must be some more notice than, than an email from my engineer.
If I can interrupt you, did you, what, what did you do after you got that email? Did, did you follow up? Did you call Mr. Carter? What did you do?
No, I don't, I don't think I did.
You just kept working?
Well, we, we, yeah, we just kept working.
When?
We got the official or official, we got a more formal notice on the letterhead or on a tablet of some field tablet from an inspector that said, stop. And we did it. Our dates are wrong or maybe misunderstood. We didn't operate in November. I can't explain the Facebook post. We, we have people call us all the time wanting to bring material in. We had to tell them we weren't going to be open. We thought we could still accept material as long as we weren't crushing. But that couldn't happen either. We did call and, and ask about that to the planning. They said, no, they wouldn't recommend doing that.
Did you get communication from Mr. Sinewicki during this time?
Sure.
Okay. And what communication did you give back to him?
I don't know. I, I don't recall specific.
That's fine. That's, that.
We've always been available to communicate.
Senator Sinewicki, quick question for you. Thank you, Lance. John, so when you, when did you get that email? I mean, when did you find that email out you just referenced there?
Freedom of information.
Okay, so you got that after?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
After, yeah.
Okay. No, I, thanks, thanks, John. That's all I got. Thanks, Pete.
Thanks, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. Senator Sinewicki, please. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Is there a way for you to determine a dollar amount or place a dollar amount on the amount of harm that you may have incurred because of this?
Our health.
Yeah.
So you're, in my document I shared with you, council member, this is serious stuff. They're, they're crushing concrete and there's that silica dust. And it's a real thing.
So how can we make you home?
You know, what we experienced in that neighborhood, what I experienced personally, I, it's, it's hard for me to articulate how brazen they were. And then, but you have to put yourself in my position. I didn't know they were operating unlawfully until November. And then these folks promptly, when I called one of your staff members in November, they promptly went down and shut them down. That was their second shutdown order after being notified via email to shut down. So they had three of, they had three notices to shut down. So anyway, getting back to your question, how do you put a price on health? We got kids in the neighborhood. We got elderly folks in the neighborhood. The silica dust is flying everywhere. The videos, I know Clint Eastwood, who, when it comes to taking videos, they do not do it justice, the amount of dust. I'm telling you, it was dust bowl like level dust coming out of that plant, out of their operation. It was hideous. It was absolutely hideous. And that's when I picked up the phone and called them and said, this is ridiculous. Now, they would adjust, he would quit for a while, then they'd start again. But, but they were, they were taking loads all summer, all through the fall. The, the trucks were rolling through, they were full bowl operating in terms of accepting rubble. And to this day, even now, as we speak, they're in violation of the SUP special use permit. The variance says because of hardship, okay, there's that 300 foot variance for these type of operations from a residential line. So that, what they said is in their site plans, that they'll set back 400, including storage of rubble and crushing the concrete. Right now, there's a pile of rubble with inside that 400 feet, right now. So they need to move that pile of rubble without crushing it. Cause they can't crush it in their very tight limit under the, both the SUP and the variance. in their very tight limit under the, both the S U P and the variance agreement or agreement that they got, or the variance that they got. They cannot crush out by the neighborhood like they were. They were one of those videos, I could throw a baseball at what, where they were crushing. So.
So what would you like to see done?
I would like to see Lot 2 denied. I would like to see Lot 2 denied. I think the, the, the level and degree and depth of not abiding and non-compliance is off the charts. It's off the charts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you. One, one thing to start with is we, we as a council cannot make the senator or anyone whole. I mean, that's, that's a civil matter. So we, we can't be handing out awards for damages. The, I, Senator, you know what the next legal step would be, I assume, but Mr. Paulson, could you come to the podium, please? Walk me through the, I think we're, do we all agree that there were four times that you were given a, a stop work order?
No.
No? How many times, two?
One we, one we ignored, one we complied.
Okay, so to, sorry to revisit history. When was, when was the first stop work order issued?
My recollection is first part of August.
Of '24?
Yes.
Okay. And what did, what, what did you do? What was, what was? Tell me what the work order said to stop doing.
There, there was no work order. There was, there was just information sent over. I didn't even remember the email that John has. Someone came out and inspector came out and said, you guys need to stop. And,
Stop operations?
Yeah.
So, and, and you, and
That was given.
Where in, where in your mind was stopping operations only crushing and not receiving? How, how was that determination made?
Well, that site had been receiving material for, I don't, decades. I don't know how long, a long time. So to me, that was not an operation that required a permit. Clearly, it did require a permit, but that had been going on. So that wasn't creating dust. So we felt like that could continue, but.
How, I'm sorry to interrupt, but how long have you been in the business?
In the crushing business? Seven years.
How many?
Seven.
Seven? And, and when materials are brought in, there's no dust in your seven years of experience?
Well, we don't create the dust. It comes in off the road or, or whatever.
When you're dumping it off the truck?
Well, I was wrong. I, I don't mean no dust. I mean, it's typically not.
Okay, so the first work order, stop work order, you finally complied with. And then, when did you start up operations again?
Late September.
Why?
To make room for the improvements we were required to make.
And you were crushing, correct?
Correct.
So I, I, I don't understand why. Help me understand why you would start crushing. And if you're gonna say to make room for the work you were to do to clear the site, you knew you weren't, you were not allowed to crush.
Well, but we're required to clear the site.
Are there other ways to clear the site?
I mean, pushing material around would just been a,
Would that have complied with the, the, the operation, what you were allowed to do?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, so how long were you operating again before you got the next stop work?
Approximately 30 days.
30 days? And, and you, is that the one you ignored initially?
No, we, we complied with that one.
Sorry, help me out. When was the one you ignored?
In August.
The first one?
Correct.
Okay. What kind of activity is going on there today?
Nothing's been going on except for improvements. Paving, fence, tearing down the silo.
It does seem, and help me out, anecdotally though, as I drive down 480, it, it does appear, seems to be that those piles are getting higher. No?
Shouldn't be. We're not receiving material. We're not hauling out.
I mean, I, I, I understand senators and, and the rest of the neighbors frustration. And how can they trust you going forward when you've at least twice, and really maybe at least three times because you ignored one? You know, if, if this were to pass today, and we've already done the special use permit, correct, Mr. Fansel?
Correct, yes. It was approved last February.
I mean, I, if there's a speck of dust that flies where it shouldn't fly, I, I would have a show cause hearing on your special use permit that day. You've, you've flown this in their face. And it's despicable. It really is. But we've issued, we've, we've approved the special use permit. This is the last step of that process. But I, I would hope Senator Senowicki or any neighbor would call any one of us the minute they saw any type of violation. And if you were to ignore that, there's absolutely no sympathy.
I understand.
Not from my standpoint.
I understand totally.
I have a little trouble believing you right now.
I understand that too.
Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Senator Senowicki. Earlier, I asked the question, what did you, and so I'm asking for clarification here. What did you interpret when I asked the question, what would it take you to be whole?
In terms of their operation, I think is what you were saying. Yeah, not, not any sort of payment or anything.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, and that's why I responded with, these are health issues. So it's very important.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hug.
Lance?
Yes.
I'm in an awkward position here. Because what I'm gonna say is gonna seem like I'm taking your side and I'm clearly not my intent, John. But do you remember when I showed up on your property unannounced?
Yes.
And I asked you to show me the concrete crusher?
Correct.
Where was that concrete crusher?
It wasn't there.
Okay. So everything everybody says is true about you operating and you got two notices, one via email that went to TD2, your engineering company, and then they contacted you and said, somebody told them to stop. That was your first notification, a third chain, a, a third chain email notification. And then the second one, if I remember correctly, was a written notice.
Correct.
Okay. And and again, when I contacted you guys about having a town hall, you said, hey, absolutely. So I'm gonna ask you again. Will you be willing to do another town hall with John and the neighbors to try to get to a point to where you can convince them that although there may have been some inconsistencies in the past, that there will be no inconsistencies in the future? Would you be willing to participate in, in another town hall meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay, Mr. Senowicki, would you come up, please? Hey, John, would you be willing to participate in another meeting with the company? And hopefully we can get the rest of the neighbors to come and, and try to get to some kind of consensus is probably not the right word, the closest I can come up to. That as we move forward, that there will be checks and balances to make sure that they are operating within the confines of the law. Would you be willing to sit down with them again?
You know, that's a tough question.
We can't undo the past, John. We, we can move forward and try to make things,
Councilmember Hug, I understand that. But you didn't live the Shidley Town Dust Bowl of '24. I mean, it was that bad. I called you. I told you how bad it was. I would question the value of having a town hall now because after three notices, they actually did stop operating, after three? I mean, how many, how many notices do they need to get, Councilman Hug? I, I mean, so third time's a charm for corporate.
I'm not disputing the past. What I want to do is try to find a way that we can move forward so you don't have to relive what you relived in 2024.
Yeah, that was real tough. And I didn't even, I didn't even get into, you know my street, South 27th Ave. It's a purely and distinctly residential street. We got these 18-wheelers and these dump trucks flying through there when they were operating. There's no way that that can continue. I condensed my paper and all that just to the, to pollution, basically is what I did, and to their non-compliance. And it was, and that made it be about 10, 10-page document or something. There's so much non-compliance there. So that's a tough question and I'm not prepared to answer that right now. I would question the value of a town hall in the near term because they're not operating. And given their track history, I don't know, Councilman Hug, I really don't know. I'm not trying to be difficult here. I'm hoping that you will stick up for the neighborhood. I'm hoping that you'll stick up for my neighbors and our health. And that you will deny for Lot 2. Now, they can come back, perhaps. Maybe they can talk to the neighbors, but I'm, I'm hoping that as our council member, that you'll stick up for us against what happened here last summer. Getting back to Councilmember Melton's comments, so far has been an entire, there's been a total lack of accountability. Total lack of accountability on behalf of crushing. I'd say deny this Lot 2 and then they could come back sometime in the future. Maybe after sitting down with neighbors and, and going through truck traffic, traffic routes and, I think this thing really needs to be reworked. So, so listen, Councilman Hug, let me, let me just say this. I didn't, I submitted my concerns to this operation way early, back in February or whatever it was, that you guys approved the special use permit. And I said the dust was gonna be a problem. You know, no, no dust would potentially be a problem, truck traffic. I had all those concerns. But I was open to the possibility of working with them. And I was open to the possibility of developing a relationship as a corporate neighbor, but they failed. They just failed. What can I say? Look at this track history, the documents I showed you, they failed. But I was open. You know, how many people want a concrete crushing operation 80 feet behind their house? Nobody wants one. But I didn't come down here and raise all kinds of heck about it. Said, I'll be willing to work with these guys. They seem like they're good guys. Well, I found out the hard way, that's probably the worst mistake in my life was, one of the worst mistakes in my life was trying to work with these folks. Because as you could see from the documents I provided you, there was blatant disregard for the law.
John, don't go away. I'm not done with you. Like I mentioned earlier, I'm, I'm in kind of an awkward position because I want to find a way for everybody to be happy. But in, in full disclosure, how long has that site been a concrete recycling site?
So there was a, a pile of concrete there and it'd been there for a long time. But it wasn't a concrete crushing site. It was not a concrete crush.
They were just storing it there.
They were just storing it there, right. And minimal dust from that concrete. I mean, and I don't know who was there before, who owned it. Well, it was John, my neighbor, John, had an interest in the property. And it was just a pile of rubble, basically, was there.
So they were just storing debris?
Storing rubble, yeah, concrete rubble and from that, but there was inactivity. There was a lot of, there was, there was not a lot of truck traffic. So what, what they did was operate heavy machinery and truck traffic on raw dirt. Many days, that's, so when you said there was no, no concrete crusher there, I would invite you in my backyard to have a ice cold tea when they were just, trucks were going in and out. The dust was unbearable. So.
All right, thanks, John. Okay, Mr. Rowe.
It seemed to me when I, when I was going through this material late last week and early this week, it looked to me like the material that I received from Senator Senowicki really wasn't germane to the topic that we were talking about in my, in my view. And I just wanted to see, you know, was I completely mistaken or, I mean, does, if we approve this, these two resolutions, does that do anything to hold the business accountable to the point that, that John is looking for?
Dave Fansel City Planning, if, if, my opinion is if you approve the plat, then it has satisfied another condition of the use permit. And once all of the conditions, and I think this is the final one, that was of the, the conditions of the use permit, we will actually issue electronically a special use permit for the site. And then that, in my opinion, is when the clock starts on them operating legally and within the, the boundaries of that use permit.
Okay, that was, that, that was what I was looking for. So if we, if we approve this, that puts us in a stronger position to enforce the special use permit and ultimately get John what he's looking for.
Yeah, well, I think by approving this is the only way they are able to get a special use permit.
Right.
Correct.
But I guess by, just want to make sure that, are we in a, we're, we're in a weaker position to hold them accountable today than if we had the, the permit in place?
You definitely are in a stronger position if you have the use permit holding over their, their operation.
Okay. Okay, I, I understand the neighbors and, and what you're trying to accomplish. And I, and I really do appreciate what Mr. Harding said. If there's any, you know, variance or any, any wavering off of what they're allowed to do, then we can hold them accountable and, and I think then we could do something that, that would be effective. I don't know that by just not approving this vacation, that really gets anything accomplished. So I'll probably vote for it, but, but with the stipulation that the eyes are gonna be pretty clearly on that operation going forward.
Yes, Councilmember.
If there's something you would like to say?
I think Councilmember Rowe, I would have a question, Mr. Fansel, if it's not approved for Lot 2, they can't operate. Is that correct?
Dave Fansel City Planning, that is correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Yeah, I, I think I kind of close with this, but I'll, I'll just repeat it. I am gonna vote to approve the preliminary and final plat on this because I think it does put the city in a stronger position. But as I said to Mr. Paulson, I will not have any sympathy if there is the slightest violation of the special use permit. And we'll have no, no, no second thoughts about calling that in for a show cause hearing. So with that, I'll make the motion to approve both items 16 and 17.
Just a motion and a second to approve those two items. Mr. Bigley, was your light on? Go ahead. Yeah?
Mr. Fansel, just help me understand. As you hear this, if this is, if these two items are approved, confirm for me again that if there's a violation found, what is the enforcement tools that we will have, just so I clearly understand that?
So Dave Fansel City Planning, this is one of the conditions of the special use permit that the air quality permit is still hanging out there. So there are probably a few things that we still need proof of before we will actually issue that special use permit. It's been approved with conditions. This has been one, this is one of the, what's before you today is a condition of that. Once all the conditions have been satisfied, the department will actually issue a special use permit. And at that point, this site and this operation is locked down to those conditions. And if, I, I think it's pretty clear that if there are violations of that, then we will send them a notice that they're out of conformance. And in my department's ability, we will expect them to be into conformance. I've heard a number of people say that one thing out of conformance, the council has the right to call it back for a show cause and revoke the permit.
Okay. And the,
Let me add one thing.
Please.
If we get a complaint and it's not rectified, I'll speak from my department's perspective. If we get a complaint and it's not rectified in a very timely manner, we would, we would, we would request and we would be asking the we would request and we would be asking the council to do, to revoke that permit.
Thank you for that. And we can't unring the bell that Mr. Sennowiki, the Dust Bowl of 2024, John. We can't unring that. I mean, you've got great documentation. Lance, you don't have to get up, but Brinker was pretty kind to you in his words, Councilman Harding was. I won't tell you what I was thinking in my head of what I wanted to say, but I think it's pretty clear that what happened last year was totally unacceptable for the health and well-being of the neighbors. And you guys defied it because you probably thought that you could. That is my opinion. If these two pass today with the director of planning sitting over my left shoulder, understanding that the teeth, and one last question, Dave. A complaint can be from Mr. Sennowiki or any neighbor, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And John, I know you're not going anywhere, right? You'll, you'll still be down there. So I think it's fair to say that not only Mr. Sennowiki and neighbors down there, but also Councilmember Hug will be clearly focused on this. I reluctantly am going to support these with sympathy, understanding we cannot unring that bell. It just sucks. It, it, plain and simple, what happened last summer. Do I want to hold them accountable? Yes, but I do feel at the end of the day that now there are teeth into enforcing, to making sure that Lance and Crushing it meet the highest of standards. And if they don't, then they're going to be back to this body. Thanks, Mr. President.
And Mr. Fanslot, do you have that special use permit in front of you?
I, Dave Fanslot, I do not. It wasn't on the agenda, so I didn't bring it.
Okay. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Right, thank you. I'm concerned about the activities that was taken, that took place in this situation where emails went out instructing behaviors to stop, and it was ignored. And while we cannot turn back the hand of the clock, we are setting a precedence that other folks in this situation, same similar situation, can do the same thing six months from now. I mean, because we, we had an acknowledgement today that we ignored conversations. That was all, and so everyone sees all of this movement that we took, that took place today on TV, in public. And if I was a business owner, I would do the same thing because there is no consequences for my actions. So I want that on the record, that we are setting a precedence that it's okay to not do something when we, when we're being told not to. Because when we come in front of city council, we will say it's too late to do anything. We can't do the, we cannot turn the hand of the clock. No, I mean, that's not the behavior that we would want for people in our community or business owners to do in our city. You would not want me to do certain things. Would you give me a free pass to do whatever I want to do? Would you be lenient for, for me or anyone else? That's the question. I don't expect the answer is rhetorical. But we cannot continue to expect to have high expectation for some people and not have high expectations for others. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no further lights. There was a motion and a second to approve Items 16 and 17. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Hug. Johnson. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to one.
Thank you all for your testimony.
Items 18 through 21 can be considered together for Blue Stem Prairie, Second Edition, located at 4966 Newport Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items 18 and 19, ordinance is to rezone this property from DR District to R5 District and DR District. Item 20, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 21, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearings on items 18 through 21 are today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Jake Bell with Olson, 21.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay.
Do you have some good news for us?
Yes. 2111 South 67th Street, Omaha, Nebraska 68106. I'm here today with the owner, Habitat for Humanity. We're here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Motion to approve.
Just motion and a second to approve. And I was just joking, but this project is good news. So we appreciate you guys being here and your patience for, remaining for this public hearing. No more lights. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Yes.
Harding. Hug. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Items 22 through 24 can be considered together for Mason Place Rose, located southwest of 33rd and Mason Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 22, an ordinance to approve a PUR overlay district. Item 23, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 24, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items 22 through 24 are today. Proponents, please.
Alex Jensen with Milestone Development, 6324 South 118th Street. Just here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents?
Good afternoon, Omaha City Council. Donnie Johnson, Johnson Equestrian Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. We would like to present this to the council that the African-Americans that I'm associated with are willing to take a cut in pay if the union bosses will allow them to work.
It's got to be the 33rd and Mason.
Oh, this is not the one with the cut of pay?
No.
Oh, sorry about that. I know that was something about a cut of pay.
Any other opponents to these items? Seeing none, public hearings are closed. Just motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Items 25 through 28 can be considered together for the riot at Harrison, located northeast of 216th and Harrison Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items 25 and 26, ordinance is to rezone this property from AG District to DR District and R6 District. Item 27, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 28, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items 25 through 28 are today. Proponents, please.
Joe Flaxbeard, 14710 West Dodge Road. On behalf of the applicant, I'm also joined the audience by the applicant and their attorney if they have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak? This has to be 216th and Harrison Street, right?
25, Mr. Frederson. I realize that your college days was really hard. In the meantime, my political science teacher talked about you. In the meantime, Donnie R. Johnson, Johnson Equestrian Foundation, again, this continuance, turning agricultural land into housing development. Do you think there's going to be some jobs in there for us somewhere? Because we're willing to take a cut in pay to help the city straighten all these streets that got messed up. So if we take a cut in pay, and will the union get upset? Because if you pay us less.
Okay, you're off-topic, Donnie.
Well, what about the part of, some money is better than no money.
Any other proponents on these items? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Just motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Items 29 through 32 can be considered together for Bedford Heights, located at 7060 Bedford Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 29, an ordinance to rezone this property from R435 District to R6 District. Item 30, an ordinance to approve a PUR overlay district. Item 31, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 32, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items 29 through 32 are today. Proponents, please.
Kyle Hazy with E&amp;A Consulting Group, representing the applicant, here to make myself available for any questions, council or audience may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Kyle, I might just ask you a quick question. This is my district, and I went by yesterday, and it looks like there's substantial clearing already and preparing to move forward. So it looks like about 25 single-family homes?
It's 30.
Thirty.
And there'll be single-family homes for rent.
For rent?
Yes.
Okay. What are those price points? Do you have that with you?
There'll be market rate. I don't exactly where they have those set yet.
Okay. And obviously, what we're doing here today with the rezone and the PUR, we're talking a new street and sidewalks and landscaping and all those things, right?
Yep, we're providing that connection from the street to the north down to the south. So that street is no longer a dead end, and it makes a connection for emergency vehicles and for the neighbors along that street. And it also kind of clears up an area that was used for dumping with that dead-end street prior.
Yeah, I agree with that, and I think it's a good infill project, so.
Yes, I agree.
Thanks for doing that.
Yep.
Is there a motion? Just motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Items 33 through 36 can be considered together for Avenue 1, Replat 6, located northeast of 192nd and Burke Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 33, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to mixed-use district development agreement. Items 34 and 35, resolutions to approve the preliminary plat and final plat. Item 36, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and votes on items 30 through 36 are today. Proponents, please.
Jeffrey Hofer, Jasperstone Partners, 16820 Francis Street, here on behalf of the landowner and the developer.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Yes, sir, Mr. Frederson, Omaha City Council. Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson Equestrian Foundation. Now, do you suppose if the city keep building these houses, they should start looking for some jobs to pay for?
Any other proponents on these items? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. There's a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Hug.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Items 37 through 41 can be considered together for Elmington Subdivision, located at 5504 Kansas Avenue. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 37, an ordinance to rezone this property from DR District to R6 District. Item 38, an ordinance to approve a PUD overlay district. Items 39 and 40, our resolutions to approve the preliminary plat and final plat. Item 41, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearings and votes on items 37 through 41 are today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 Western Road, appearing with the developer. With me today is Ben Dushel of Elmington Capital. And then also with me today is Rob Duval of Shimmer and Associates. They're the consulting engineers on this particular project. Just a little bit about Elmington Capital. They're headquartered in Nashville. Ben has actually flew up here from Nashville, and so luckily he was able to stay because he has to fly out of here at about 6:30. But in any event, he's here to answer more about his particular company. But just by way of background, they manage about 37,000 units in 15 states. And when I say that, that means they manage it. They've also acquired and/or developed about 10,000 units, multifamily units, and they're all affordable since about 2010. So they're in a number of states, both in the management capacity, also in the ownership and development capacity as well. So there are a number of approvals that are before you today. I'll just show you. This is the subject property that's outlined in black here. As you notice, there's a residential structure here, and then there's the telecommunication towers. You can't see well here, but those are the big towers that I think they might even have come down by now. But in any event, it's mostly undeveloped, currently zoned DR. The zoning around to the north, as you can see, is R7 PUD. There's R6. There's CC. To the west, there's Community Commercial as well. There's R6 PUD. To the west, to the east is R4 and R2. And then, of course, to the south is R2 as well. And so the proposal, oh, and also I should say that the master plan, future land use map calls this to be low-density residential housing. So what you have before you today is a one-lot, final plat and a preliminary plat prior to the final plat, but it's just one lot, and, and that's, that's it. The rezoning is to, from DR to R6 with the more restrictive R5 site regulators occurring with the PUD. So. Set this here so you can see. So this is the proposed site plan. You'll notice eight three-story buildings. Here's the buildings shown here. There's two buildings that have 33 units and six buildings that have 24 units in each of the buildings. There's also a clubhouse with a swimming pool that has a number of typical amenities that you see in today's multifamily apartment projects. There's a fitness room, patios, green space, playground area, dog park. There's in-unit washers and dryers in every single unit. The total number of units is 210 units, and the unit mix is 48 one-bedroom units, 72 two-bedroom units, and 93 bedroom units. And the rental rates are, for the one-bedroom, about $1,124 a month. For the two-bedrooms, $1,359 a month. And for the three-bedrooms, $1,572 a month. So those are average rental rates. And again, this is 14 units per acre. The total site's 15 acres with 210 units, so it's 14 acres per unit. That is considered under our zoning code, master plan, to be low-density residential housing. In Omaha, we say anything 15 units or less per acre is low-density residential housing. So the, the form of the housing isn't what matters. We look at density. And so this is consistent with the master plan and the future land use map of this particular location. As far as the building materials, these are some elevations. You'll notice there's brick, there's cement, board siding, vinyl windows, asphalt shingles, and metal balcony railings. This is another proposed elevation, showing what these buildings will look like. This project is a $62 million project, so this is a very significant investment in this particular area. That's what the costs are. As far as the parking, getting back to the site plan itself, there are 410 surface parking stalls on the premises. This is a little under two to one, but it's 1.95 parking stalls per unit. So it's just under the two parking stalls per unit. Again, this is what they call a Lytech project, a low-income housing tax credit project. Ben is here to answer any questions that you might have. But my understanding is that they'll be renting to tenants that meet the 60% area median income, and then also they have some units available that will meet the 30%. So I think Ben can get into that in more detail if anyone cares to hear about that. You know, those are the type of tenants that are nurses, teachers, first responders, those kinds of tenants will be the ones that will be living in this particular project. As far as access into the site, you have North 56th Street to the west. You've got Kansas Avenue to the south. There is a connection through a cul-de-sac, North 54th Street, in this particular location. And, and the main entrance is off this North Hampton Road onto the North 56th Street. So that's the main entrance into the site. And then, and then you have this one access point here off Kansas Avenue. There was a traffic study done. The traffic study showed that there were no public improvements required. So the infrastructure that's in place today will serve the 210 units without any additional public improvements being required. being required. We did meet with the neighborhood twice on two different occasions, once on August 3rd, once on September 3rd. I think most of the concerns were sort of the typical concerns that you see with these types of housing projects. Nothing, I don't think, that we haven't all heard or seen before. As far as the construction, they're looking at a construction start of the first quarter of 2026, with a completion of the project in the summer of 2027. So with that, this is coming to you with favorable recommendations from the various departments, as well as favorable recommendation from the planning board. Again, we're all here to answer whatever questions and respond to any opposition that might be here today, but thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today?
Omaha City Council, Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson Question Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. I think this Larry guy is a wonderful young man. I think he do a wonderful work. But you know what's confusing us in North Omaha? There's no eggs for Easter egg hunt this year.
All right.
The price of eggs is out of the sky when you're building a property.
Nope, you're out of order. And please don't come to the microphone again if you're going to continue to be out of order today, okay?
I'm going home for a second. You guys ain't making no sense.
All right. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I'm opposed to this because I have some areas close to where I live that need to be done before this is. Wanita, you might be interested in this. But between Cumming Street and Hamilton Street, 45th to Lafayette, pretty soon you'll be going a little bit north of 50th and taking my property. But that whole area has been blighted. Maybe you haven't declared it blighted yet, but from...
You gotta speak to this area.
But this new development ought to be going there. That's in midtown area. Why don't you clean that up and fix that up? The way things work here is maybe next week you'll have an amendment, and all of a sudden, Tiff Financing will show up. Is that the way it works? Has this area been blighted? Master plan? What's next? We only get to speak once, and that's at the first hearing, and that's now. So I'm having my say. Is that okay?
As long as you speak to this property, yeah.
I'm against it, that's why.
Okay.
And, you know, maybe you better answer why the crossroads isn't doing the damn thing in yet. Everybody else is building.
Now you're out of order.
Crossroads isn't. Explain it.
Any other opponents today? We'll have a chance to hear from the neighbors, which will be nice.
Patty McGee, 5445 Kansas Avenue, 68104. So the images that the gentleman showed looks nice and it sounds good, and I guess all of the proper codes have been checked, and we're good to go. Well, not for our community. Because, for one, in this particular area, and I've lived here, lived there for some years, and it's a pretty much residential neighborhood with single-family homes, people who have lived there for a while, invested their lives into having a home. And they're comfortable there, elderly people who have sacrificed to have the American dream of their homes. And with this project, it just does not fit in that patch of land that the gentleman showed you. It's, for one, there's other apartment complexes just north of 52nd Street, North Hampton Arms. They just recently built Prairie Springs, which is another affordable housing apartment complex. And it's just saturated. There's an elderly tower just right there, and the traffic is horrendous. The number of cars, I just can't imagine 420 cars in that space. And I recently, a couple of years ago, because of the traffic on Kansas Avenue and the accidents, I reached out to the Public Works, and they agreed to do a calming project to slow down the traffic because it's dangerous. And I've seen many cars coming around, having accidents, going into neighbors' yards, into my yard. I've actually put boulders in front of my yard to protect my children from being harmed because cars come around that curve so fast, they lose control. And this is not just in the winter, it's any time. And even with the traffic calming device there, it's still a problem. And on Sorensen Parkway, it's terrible. There's accidents, 52nd and Sorensen Parkway, every week, there's a horrible accident. I'm sure that it's on record. It can be proven. So public safety and traffic is a problem. Also, my concern, and just by the way, I have petitions. I have 200 signatures of petitions. So imagine 200 people here in the room with me who oppose.
And if you'd like, you can submit those for the public record.
I will.
Okay.
I will give those to you. So it all sounds nice. They own several properties around the country, based in Nashville, I'm sorry, based in Nashville. But the reviews that I have and the complaints that I have are horrendous. They have one star. Elmington Management has one-star approval. They refuse to adhere to their own policies. There's noise complaints. They have tenants who just cannot get in touch with anyone whenever there's a problem or a concern. And that's consistent throughout all of their properties, different states, it doesn't matter what location, what state. So they're not taking care of their tenants. They don't care about their tenants. They don't care about their property. Someone moved out, and they've consistently asked, they were due a security deposit back. It's five months, they still hadn't gotten anything. And all of this is just right online. You can Google it, it's right there. That's what I did, and that's why I'm appalled and just shocked that when out-of-state developers want to come to Omaha and build, they're not even vetted. Who does that? That's like allowing a nanny to come in your home without getting any information on that nanny. You're subjecting your family to what? Well, the community in North Omaha, we don't want any more apartment complex. We want a pathway to homeownership. Another complaint, they're complaining about the place, the apartment that they live in, and they feel that their safety is not considered. Cars and empty apartment buildings are getting broken into. They're saying homeless people are getting into the buildings, sleeping in the hallways. You can smell weed smoke and all throughout the buildings outside when it's supposed to be a non-smoking property. Also, people don't respect people's paint. They play loud music all times through the night and into the morning. And these are different locations around the country, wherever they have apartments. Complained a person toured the property, wanted to come and take a look at the property after they paid their $250 administration fee. It wasn't the property that they were looking at, and there was damage, there was mold, leaks in windows, and they did not want to move into this unit, and asked for their deposit back, and they were told that they would have to go to court to get it. And it sounds like a lot of people have to resort to going to court because they're not answering their concerns. Now, this is not somebody that I would want to come into my state and just disrespect my community. And we're not pleased about it. Again, trying to reach somebody to get an issue resolved, can't get a hold of anybody. I mean, it goes on and on. People are feeling like they're targeted as minorities. They feel that they are hell-bent on just disrespecting people of color. It's all here, in the complaints. The Better Business Bureau approval, one star. And, you know, it may be good, you know, an idea. You have an idea. Plans are drawn out. It's looked at, but just because it's a plan and somebody's idea doesn't mean that it's a good one. And for this neighborhood, it just does not fit. One of the persons that signed the petition stated, "Please consider our signatures as a collective resistance to the proposed plan to develop an unwarranted complex in our neighborhood." "In our neighborhood. We will stand together to oppose the development as it would leave a permanent stain and negatively impact the landscape and future of our families, businesses, and wildlife." This property, it is a wildlife refuge. There's deer, fox, bald eagles, and it's been that way for decades. So I strongly oppose this complex, this development being built. I know that Omaha, or everywhere, is a housing crisis, but this is not what we want. This is not what we want. And then, we don't want to have to come back here after a few years and things are torn down as far as the ruins, the property is disintegrating or going down because they're not managing it, and that's proven with all of the complaints that are easily accessible online. And have to deal with this because there's already other concerns around the city where apartments are not in good condition, they're substandard living, where people have to be moved out of the complexes because things are so bad. So I oppose, and I'm asking that city council, if you can't deny it today, just stall it, hold it off until there's some vetting done. I'm asking you to vet Elmington Develop Company. Because we don't want to have to look back and say, "The ball has already gone down that road, so let's just look forward." Well, instead of going through this and then coming back saying, "Okay, we're sorry about that, but that's in the past, let's move forward." Let's look forward now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents who want to speak today? And did you want to submit those petitions? You can do that right down here if you want.
Hello, I'm Camille Mottor Moton. I live at 5236 Kansas Avenue, and the exit that he showed for that apartment complex will be just maybe 12 feet from my property line. I moved in that neighborhood in 1986. It's a very well-established, middle-class neighborhood, very quiet. There are not even sidewalks. I don't know what you call low-density when there are homes all around to the west and to the east and to the south. I don't understand low-density density, but I do think it's interesting that he made the comment that, you know, you got the usual complaints that you get when you move into a neighborhood, and what are the usual complaints? "You're destroying my neighborhood. You're ruining my property value. You're taking the whole landscape, the whole environment of my neighborhood, and you're destroying it." That's the usual complaints, and those are valid complaints that people have when they live in their neighborhood. I want you to imagine that somebody would come to your neighborhood and just plant a big apartment complex there, a little street with no sidewalks, where the school buses let the kids off right there, and all of a sudden, now I have, well, I don't, 400, 500 people, transient people that are moving in and out of this apartment complex. It's not fair. And I also want to say that I think I'm amazed with the ease at which this happened. This is North Omaha, and I feel like if this was West Omaha, it wouldn't have happened as easily. So I'm here to oppose this development. This is not a neighborhood for an apartment complex. This is a neighborhood for families. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents who want to speak today? You can bring your laptop down right here if you want.
Louis C. Mattis, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I just want to echo the previous commenter that said that it's a traffic nightmare over on Sorensen Street, and the area is vastly single-home. And this development proposes density. And perhaps density would be good in an area that has more thoroughways, more main roads, but this area doesn't have a lot of main roads. So Sorensen is a main arterial way. And so I just want to let you know that I've noticed that situation going through the traffic, and personally, it's just sad to see accidents be so regular and people getting into accident, and then they just get ferret away. And I don't think people in the neighborhood want to see that for their family members. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, public hearing's closed. Mr. Jovan, would you want to do some lights on? But if you want to answer some of those questions, you're welcome to.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, Larry Jovan, 11440 Weston Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant and the developer. Just a couple of things. You know, first of all, I just want to reemphasize the fact that this is consistent with the master plan and the future land use map, and it is low-density residential housing, and it's the typical traffic patterns that you see with low-density residential housing, which traditionally has relatively low AM and PM peak traffic counts, as we've all... Could you hit the... So just point out really quick on the site plan, you'll notice that this is the North Hampton Boulevard. Now, this comes into the site, but it kind of follows that same kind of look and feel of a boulevard. And so that's really the main entrance into the particular development off Kansas, or I'm sorry, off North 56th Street and North Hampton. But so you have this access point, and then you have the access point off North 54th Street, which continues on here on the Sorensen Parkway. And then you have this kind of driveway, if you will, which is off of Kansas Avenue. So you've got three access points into this particular development, three ways. The main way is off of North 56th Street and North Hampton Drive. As far as the complaints, you know, these guys manage 37,000 units all over the country. When I say they manage them, they just do that. They're the agent for the owner, so sometimes they can't control, you know, what the owner is doing. Some of the properties they take as a management group... Some of the properties they take as a management group, as they are, if you will, different ages of multifamily units, that's a kind of a different arm. What arm is before you today is the arm that actually acquires and develops apartment units, and they actually retain the units and they don't sell them. So when they acquire apartment units themselves and own them, they own and manage them, but then when they develop them, they also own them. They don't, what they call, turn and burn them. So this is sort of a different animal than when they're acting as a management group because they don't have necessarily as much control. Ben is here. He can add to that if he would like. Again, this is a $62 million project in this particular location. Currently, you have 15 acres that are really underutilized, underdeveloped, and this will be, I think, ultimately a nice addition to this particular area and will fit in nicely with the proposed project. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I don't know if Ben wants anything to add as far as Elmington Capital is concerned, but if you have questions of myself, or Ben, or Rob, we're happy to answer those.
Thank you. We do have a number of questions that I'm sure we can call you back up to. We'll start first though with Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. McGee, if you would mind coming back up, please. Thank you for providing the information that you just spoke on. You pretty much covered the concerns that you had about the proposed apartments. Are there aspects of the project that you would support if changes were made? And if so, what would that be?
Well, it's difficult to say because the gentleman saying that it's a good fit, he can't say that because he doesn't live in this community.
Okay.
And I like that he keeps talking about the price of the project.
Okay.
Well, my price and my value is my home. And that's my investment.
Okay.
My home, my safety, and my children's future and safety.
Have you seen the plans for this?
Well, I have, but some of it, the images that I saw, they were so, the print was so small, I couldn't hardly figure out what it was, what it said. But talking about the access to the roads and getting into the complex, they're going to have to go down my street to get to one of those.
Okay.
Yes, and other people's. And the traffic, I don't know who does the traffic studies, but I would like to know that this is not going to be a problem because I don't see that. I live there every day, and traffic is a problem.
Okay. And so it's very clear that apartments, your opinion that apartments is not a right fit?
No, not at all.
What type of development do you think would be beneficial to this neighborhood or to this, yeah, to this neighborhood?
Well, east of 52nd Street, it's just all single-family homes and homes...
But to this area here, what would you propose being put there?
Single-family homes.
Okay.
I heard somewhere where they were developing, there was a gentleman here that was developing a property with single-family homes, and it sounds fitting to my neighborhood and this property on 55th and Kansas. It's just frustrating as a citizen, and I'm hoping that we're here because when I came to a city planning meeting and expressed my concerns, it was basically after the hearing was that, "Oh, well, we're just here to make sure that all the codes are proper and the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted." So I felt that it was a waste of time to have come to express my concerns. So I'm hoping that that's not the case here, that as a citizen and community member of Omaha, that my concerns are being heard. And it's not just about the development plans and the cost of the development. And I don't know if he's expressing something of value he's going to bring to Omaha. Well, that's not valuable to me as a community member in North Omaha. A lot of the property, the apartments are being popped up all over the place. In my petitions, signatures, comments, multiple comments are made about not wanting apartments in North Omaha. Because it's enough. It's enough. It's enough.
So as you know, this would have to be approved. There are seven city council members and majority wins. So if for some reason this was to be approved today, would you be willing to sit down with the developers and discuss some modifications? You and the 200 individuals, would you be willing to sit down with the developer to kind of talk about some modification on the project?
That's a tough question to answer. I do know that my home is right on Kansas, and I would be looking right at a parking lot, when right now I'm looking at beautiful landscape and wildlife, and it's peaceful. I don't have to listen to loud music all through the night. I don't have to hear gunshots because that's what the complaints are. Gunshots and crime, and so I'm really concerned. And I think it was Mr. Fanslaw on the interview with WW6 that I did that voiced and said that out-of-state developers are not vetted. So, I mean, let me ask, would either of you want an apartment complex like this in your I don't think so. So I would not want to see, I would want a berm, a brick wall as high as it can be, six feet, 10 feet, however high it could be, to stop gunfire from coming to my house, and trees to hide the buildings. And right now, that's all I can think of. I mean, the design, the images of the complex looks dated and tired already, so I can imagine what a few years on it would look like.
Thank you.
Thank you. It is, I'm just curious about the traffic study. And how is that? Because I cannot imagine that this is not going to be a problem.
Yeah, I was going to ask that next.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we have a representative here who could address that, I think.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Rob Duval with shimmer, 1044 North 114th, 115th Street. So regarding the traffic, we did do a traffic study on Sorensen and 56th and Kansas. One of the requirements of the subdivision is that there is a four-way intersection that is going to be built in the public improvements, and they'll turn that into a four-way stop. Also, regarding the traffic, you do have three entry points on site, basically at the busiest corners. So regarding new traffic on 56th and Southwest Corner and Kansas Avenue on the south, I don't see much of a traffic impact there as well. Also, addressing the landscaping comment, this is our landscaping plan. As you can see, it's full of trees due to the buffer yard requirements. So if you have any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer any of those as well.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. McGee had some concerns, complaints about the number of accidents. And I'm sure your traffic study doesn't provide that information. So does Public Works or anyone from the city have any statistics, any data regarding the number of accidents in this area? And with this new development, can we shed some light on how that might mesh or what that will look like?
Bob Stube, Public Works. So, no, I don't have any accident information with us today. I can confirm that, I think the resident indicated that some speed bumps were put in, and that was done with regard typically with apartment complexes. They don't necessarily generate that AM and PM peak kind of traffic that you might see with an office building or something like that. So obviously, the intersections that are existing there today, other than the one that they've just indicated that would be improved or signalized intersections except at Hampton tying into the development, and then also on the south side where it ties into Kansas Avenue.
So if we were to get, is it possible for us to get some information, some statistical data regarding what the number of accidents or potential number of accidents? Because not only would that be beneficial to the neighborhood, but this is an opportunity for the developer coming into there if there is a concern, that we could address that concern simultaneously?
Yeah, so we track accident history. We can provide that information.
You said, yes, you can supply that information?
Yeah, because we track accident information, and we can look at those particular intersections such as Northwest Radio, Hampton at 55th Kansas Street on the south. So we have that information if there's an accident history at those locations.
So if we do that, we provide that information, gather that information, and we find that perhaps there is some validity to the neighbor's concern, how will we address that?
Well, typically, we do have a, within our capital improvement program, if there's an identified accidents at a particular location, we can evaluate, have our traffic engineering evaluate that and make a determination as far as what kind of controls, whether that was actually looked at by the traffic study. Again, I don't, I can't tell you that.
So about how long would it take for us to compile or get that information and make a determination for the neighbors as well as the developers to plan going forward? Granted, their project doesn't start until 2026, so we do have some leeway here.
Yeah, we can provide you the information with regard to accidents that exist there in that area today, within a very short period of time.
Okay. Go ahead.
Anita?
Yes.
Would you call me up, please?
Yes, Larry, for, one minute.
I thought you wanted to be in a wait a minute.
One minute.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Granted, this is not my neighborhood, but this is my opportunity to stop this from happening in my neighborhood. And your neighborhood, as I spoke to you before, and I mentioned it a little bit earlier, other people have been able to finish their statements. Yeah, I haven't. But however, from 45th Street to 50th Street, coming to Hamilton and then up Saddle Creek and up Country Club Boulevard, the area is being intentionally neglected. There are street vendors on the corner there of the Northwest Radio Highway in Hamilton. They unload their cars, their trucks.
Mr. Johnson, this is not on topic.
Tools, boots.
It is off topic.
Well, hire your big bus and take a drive up and down those streets, Mr. Festerson. That's almost in your district. That's almost in your district.
Larry, your minute is up.
Neglecting that whole area.
Your minute's up, Larry.
Doing their job.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much.
All right, so as I was saying... That would look like, that concludes my line of questioning here. We talked about the complaints. There was a question by Ms. McGee to address how would they get a hold of your organization should they have some concerns? Once you develop your property, they had, there's some information about that it's not easy to access or easy to generate a complaint? If we could talk about that a little bit?
Good evening. Benjamin DeShiel, 103016 South, representing the developer. As Larry mentioned, we manage close to 40,000 units, but we own 10,000 to 12,000 units that we currently own or are under construction today. All those that we own are under construction today. We are responsible for, we own those for 15-plus years. So we take very, a lot of pride in the steps necessary to ensure that they are managed properly. Elmington Property Management is held in high regard. There are, we recognize, some issues with reviews online, which we're trying to work through. Actually, we have a team that's addressing those issues, but it's kind of like when you visit a restaurant, it's not typical for you to leave a good review. It's typically you only hear the bad reviews. And if you manage close to 40,000 units, there are some bad reviews out there, and we acknowledge that. But it is in our regard that our management team will manage this and will have security on site as well as we do across all of the properties that we own and develop.
And so they will have, the neighborhood would have a direct line of access to someone if they should have some concerns?
Yes. Everyone, every regional management team funnels up through our in-house corporate management team. So there's somebody that they can always reach 24/7.
Okay. All right, so thank you very much. Appreciate that. Again, this is in my district, and I'm going to support what the neighborhood is suggesting in terms of not supporting this item. I think that we as a city need to, especially in neighborhoods, I understand zoning. However, I don't believe that individuals in East Omaha have been fully educated about zoning, the master plan, all of those kinds of things. And then we're back to East Omaha being the earliest settlement of Omaha, Nebraska, and the fact that currently we have individuals in that, in those areas where they have an average income of $20,000. Then we have the aspect of not meeting people where they're at in terms of educational levels, in terms of how we communicate as a body, as a city government, in terms of when we're making these plans and doing these things. And that's what we heard today here from the neighborhood. I think, just like we heard various conversations about Senator Sawicki and all of that movement and communication with the liquor, there was liquor conversations about the, I think it was the family, there was three gentlemen over there that came... it was the family, there was three gentlemen over there that came and talked a little bit about how they circumvented talking to city council member Danny Bagley. Communication is the key to all of this, especially in East Omaha where we have individuals. And I know everybody don't believe this because we're on this landscape of thinking that everybody is on the same level of education, thought processes, the whole nine yards, but they're not. And I, being a representative in an area where that education is not there, it makes it very difficult. And then to, to couple all of that, the things that I face on a day-to-day basis are not the same as what my colleague, Ms. Milton faced in her district where it's developed. It's not the same thing. She doesn't have to spend near amount, the amount of time to educate, promote the whole nine yards that I do. So there has to be some acknowledgement of educating people in East Omaha about these processes that we offer here at the City of Omaha. We can dance over this night and day, and I'm sure when I'm done, that there will be pushback from my colleagues that, oh, I don't know what I'm talking about, things of that nature. I, I don't expect you to understand what I go through in a given day because you don't walk in my shoes every day, nor do you walk in the shoes of the constituents in East Omaha shoes every day. So we can ignore these comments or we can do something about education, do something about communication so that we are not saddled with the situation. We have a developer here that wants to invest in the area, kudos to that, but we also have a responsibility to the neighborhood to bring them along when we're doing these things. Get input from the neighborhood. Not saying that you don't, I'm just saying that we need to do more. You cannot come into East Omaha and expect to educate that area the same as you would in Ms. Milton's neighborhood because most of the people that she supports are making $60,000 a year or more. It's not the same thing. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Mr. Jobin, I had a couple of questions for you.
Yes.
Do we have a demand for housing product in Omaha, both rent and deed?
Yes, I think there's a study that shows that we're lacking in affordable housing and we need, I don't remember.
That was gonna be my next, I was gonna dig down a little deeper.
Yeah, the number of units that we need by 2030 is another like 30,000 units or something like that, so.
And that was, that was gonna be my next kind of level of questioning, but you jumped me on it, but that's okay.
That's okay, sorry about that.
And we also have a need for workforce or affordable and decent housing, correct?
Correct.
And this, this is going to be developed with a PUD, correct?
That is correct. I was going to actually add that, that with the planning and development, what you see is what you get. If there's gonna be any changes, we'll have to come back to the planning board and the city council if there's any changes from what is before you today. And there might be some building shifts or modifications, and if that's the case, we come back to planning board, we come back to council, and we have this hearing all over again. In the meantime, if we do that, we will meet with the, the neighbors again to show them what the changes are. If they're minor modifications, then they would be approved by the planning director. So yes, it's PUD.
Speaking of meetings, you had, you had some neighborhood meetings, did you not?
We had two neighborhood meetings and I believe there was other communication. I know that I met with Ms. Johnson to kind of talk about the master plan and show her how that kind of whole process works and how we were complying with it and what low-density residential housing means. So I was trying to get her up to speed on that so she could communicate with the, the neighborhood as well. So, and I think you, Ben, had a number of calls in addition, I think, with the neighbors, not in a neighborhood setting, but on the telephone.
And in addition, I think Ben was up in Omaha for a meeting prior to. Is that right? Yes.
Yes, two.
Well, I do have one question on the, the plans that are included in our packet.
I noticed that.
Might be a little different than the plan you had up there.
It is, and that's why we're probably, we'll have to come back with the, an amendment.
If you wouldn't mind throw up, I think you probably know the one I'm talking about.
I've got, so I got this, the plan that I.
Yeah.
The plan that I shared with you today, I got today and thinking that, that was, here's the plan that's before you essentially. So the main.
I don't know if you can zoom in on that, the cul-de-sac.
So you'll notice the difference is this is now a maintenance building. This unit was, is shifted internal, so that's really about the only thing.
Now, go up to the cul-de-sac.
Huh? Yeah, the cul-de-sac and the connection as well.
The plan we have in our packet doesn't show that connection.
Yes, there's no connection, so this provides a connection, which is the third access. So yes, that we'll, we'll probably be coming back to modify that, but we think these are probably better changes anyway because it provides that third access.
Can you talk a little bit, and I don't know if you want Rob to do this or you, talk a little bit about the traffic study? I know we've kind of covered it a little, but I think it bears repeating.
Well, I'll let Rob talk about the specifics of the traffic study, but the traffic study is, you know, performed under certain guidelines and requirements of a uniform manual, so I mean, it has to meet all the requirements of that, those requirements of a, of a traffic study. The traffic study is then submitted to Public Works. Public Works has a traffic engineer that reviews it and makes sure that they agree with the analysis of the traffic study. And, and what the traffic study showed is there, there's no real public improvements that are required with respect to this particular development, other than that intersection and the four-way stop, but that's, you know, pretty minor. The other public improvement you have is this cul-de-sac here with the connection to North 54th Street. But other than that, there are no other public improvements that are being required by this particular development. So the shared form subdivision agreement doesn't have a whole lot to it.
Okay, and then back a little bit to the PUD too, which also would include the, the landscaping plan, which.
That's correct.
And if you could just leave that one up for just a minute, that might not be the exact, that's not the landscaping plan, but I think the landscaping plan calls for something like 120 some odd trees around the perimeter of the property.
Correct.
And that doesn't include any of the, the internal landscaping.
That's exactly right. And, and the landscaping is also part of the PUD as well, so the trees, where they're planted, the types of trees, the species.
That's all called out.
That's all called out, it's all required, it has to be there. And any changes have to come back to the planning board and council if it's gonna be changed.
And I, I note too that this is a Lytec project, as you said, and it will be, there will be opportunities for 60% of AMI as well as 30.
Some with 30% as well.
Right. And in addition to that, you talked a little bit about some of the amenities that are offered with, with this development too, which I think are, are great, because I think these are amenities that you would see in all parts of town and want to see in all parts of town, including swimming pools and dog parks and play areas and some of those types of amenities. So I, I want to, I guess, applaud the, the thought that the, the developer had in, including those amenities in, in a development that is, you know, that has 60% AMI and 30% AMI opportunities for, for residents. I think those are, we want everyone to have kind of equal access to, to rest and relaxation amenities, and that's included in this project, which I think is, is commendable.
I, I think the capital stack with the Lytec actually is, then you're able to enhance the architecture, you're able to enhance the, the project and the product, and you're able to provide those amenities so that it's actually a benefit to have the Lytec because you can actually have a much nicer development, much nicer product, and still meet the needs of affordable housing.
One maybe closing statement as it relates to the architecture? I know architecture is, is very personal. I try never to talk about my personal taste in architecture because I'm married to an architect and I know I'm always gonna be wrong, but my point is, is that when, you know, I, I look at this and I, I think this is, is a very, it's, it's, it's not the Taj Mahal, but it is certainly, I think, a, a good product. And I think it's, I, I think it will, all the people who are gonna live here are gonna want everything that all the neighbors who live there today want, and that's, you know, a decent, safe place to live and enjoy and raise a family or, you know, live, live their lives and be part of the neighborhood. So I'll make a motion to approve. I know there's some other lights, but I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion in a second to approve. Ms. Milton, you're recognized.
Well, I just want to say, I want to say when I first got on the council, I think the, the apartment objections were some of the hardest to deal with. And by the way, they usually are in West Omaha, because the neighbors, and we've had them, the majority of the objections for apartments are in West Omaha. In East Omaha, they're saying, we need affordable housing, we need apartments, we need more. In fact, I think it's close to 30,000 units and especially affordable housing. But in my neighborhood alone, and, and Mr. Jobin will back me up on this one because he was there, it was, we spilled over, there were 250 people, I think plus, in the room. We couldn't even fit everyone for the apartments just outside my neighborhood. So I live in Candlewood Ridgefield, and there are old apartments that are all the way, just right across from Candlewood Park. Then you have the giant apartment complex that's on the other end by Rose Lane, and then we built new apartments and even connected those apartments again into the neighborhood. And all the neighbors said, you're ruining my property values, the traffic is gonna be awful, and we're gonna, and, and believe me, that, that was just one of the biggest. But everybody in all the districts, I'm looking down at Don and Brinker, and we've had that Fire Bridge off Pacific Street. I mean, all of those apartments where the neighbors were, were coming and saying that. So it's not that we're not listening to neighbors, it's just that we actually do need development and we, it is one of the top three things that this city needs is housing. I mean, the housing shortage and the lack of housing and the lack of, yeah, there's a whole lot of apartments that are being built off 205th Street, 205th and Harrison way out in Don's area, outside the city limits, but I don't, when I'm looking at them, I don't think they're affordable though, not really affordable. I, I know, I have, know someone that is, has an apartment off 192nd Dodge and is paying 1,400 for a one-bedroom, and here I see it's 1,359 for a two-bedroom. So I mean, I'm just even looking at the differences where this is gonna be more affordable, yet they're getting all the same amenities with the pool and the clubhouse, the dog park, fitness center. So this could be a community, and I, I do know that a lot of the complexes are, are community. And I do firmly believe in the intellectual abilities of everybody in District Two. I, I think that they are extremely intelligent, smart people that live there, I'm friends with and know a lot of people in, in District Two. I don't need to talk down to them anymore than I need to talk down to any of the people that live in my district. I think they're perfectly capable of understanding things and reading things and, and knowing things, so. And I, I think specifically, knowing that we need affordable housing and being able to read our affordable, the housing action plan that, that this council passed, this is part of what we need to do. So by denying actually density in apartments, we're actually violating kind of the plan that we placed and, and we said was our goal, that I know the majority of the city is calling for, all over in all seven districts. So that, that's why I'm gonna be supporting it, it's not because we don't care. I think when they said, and I, I think when Mr. Jobin said, it's the same things we hear all the time, it's because it's the same things that a lot of us here in our districts, we, we call it the not in my backyard. And you're right, nobody really wants those apartments in their backyard, and that's what we've heard all the time, but what we can't say is, no, you can't build them in my district. I only want them built in, in somebody else's district because that's not right. We've got to have single-family housing, we've got to have multifamily housing, and we need to have it all over our city. And sometimes people don't, people don't want to hear that, just like in, in my neighborhood where they, where they fought the apartments. And they were built, and actually, the traffic has not been bad, and some of the neighbors actually said they like the connection because they can get to Costco easier. But we do, we struggle with, with the apartment building all the time, and I spend a lot of time talking to people about apartments, and in fact, I spend a lot of time talking to my constituents as well. I have two homeowners association meetings that I'm supposed to be at, at 7 o'clock, so I'll probably be leaving here in about 30 minutes. But that's why I'll be supporting these apartments. I care about neighbors and I care about what they think, but you also have to do the right thing for all of our city, and affordable housing and housing units are one of our number one priorities. So I appreciate, I do appreciate the investment in Omaha with, with the units. And the level of what it looks like, how nice they're gonna be, and all those trees, everyone needs to be put in there that's in that plan.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to reiterate the importance of educating residents in East Omaha. Has no bearing on talking down, it's, it is factual that if your income is 20 and someone's income is 60,000, there's no way that you can have the same expectation regarding their level of understanding is going to be the same. And for individuals that are not the elected representative for that area, they would have very little knowledge because, by the way, there's no investment in them moving into East Omaha to have that level of understanding. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any further lights. There was a motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Milton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to one.
Thank you for your testimony.
Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items 42 through 66 were held on March 4th. I don't see any further lights, is there a motion?
Second.
There's a motion in a second to approve. Roll call.
Milton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items 67 through 78 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent, these are items 67 through I don't see anyone, go ahead, come down, come on down.
Hello, I'm Kevin Nordhagen for item 70. I, oh, address is 12143 West Center Road. I just wanted to see if there's any questions about it. I'm the main instructor for the program, so.
Okay.
I just want to at least address that I was here.
Great, thank you for being here. I don't see any other testifiers. I'll close those public hearings. There's a motion in a second to approve those items. Roll call.
Milton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 79, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a purchase order to Polidine Inc. for the purchase of sludge, de-watering liquid polymer to be utilized by the Missouri River Water Resource Recovery Facility.
The public hearing on number 79 is today, proponents please. See none, any opponents? See none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 80, in ordinance to approve a five-year extension of the contract with FCC Environmental Services for yard waste collection, spring and fall contracts.
Public hearing on number 80 is today. Proponents, please.
Jim Tyler, City of Omaha Public Works, here to answer any questions and just give a little bit of information. This is a five-year extension of the agreement with FCC to provide spring and fall yard waste collection. With this extension, FCC will continue to collect yard waste in the spring and fall that will be brought to the City of Omaha's compost facility. The city has the option to exercise two additional five-year contract extensions with FCC for this program. The cost is not something that was renegotiated. The costs are adjusted annually according to a consumer price index. We target six weeks in the spring and the fall, where historically, our data shows that close to 50% of the yard waste season is generated during those times. So it's very good. We collect a lot of material in the short period of time that's diverted from the landfill for our compost facility. Just to mention that outside of this period, citizens can still take their yard waste by using our sticker program, using the 96-gallon bins, or we can haul it off a lot easier now that we have our facility at 60th and Harrison. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions.
Thanks. And Jim, we talked about this this morning. It'd be the administration's position that to try and go year-round, which is the interest of some in my area, that would be cost prohibitive.
At the time that we did the contract, it was considered to be cost prohibitive at that time. I don't see why that would change. I don't think we would have any bids that would be any different this time.
Okay. But you also did confirm that the six-week periods in spring and fall have been sufficient to sustain OmaGrow, and that program is going well at the new site?
Going well, very much so. Like I said, we generate, our historical data shows that we generate about 50% of the material during that, those spring and fall peak seasons. So we collect a lot of material during those times.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents on number 80? See none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Next item.
Item 81, in ordinance to approve a five-year extension of the contract with FCC Environmental Services for the mixed recyclables processing 2021 through 2026.
Public hearing on number 81 is today. Proponents, please.
Jim Tyler, here to provide a little information and then answer questions if needed. Again, this is a five-year extension to provide services to operate the city's recycling drop-off locations. Currently, this is at six locations. I think we said five this morning. I forgot about that west location out in Elkhorn. But we currently have six locations throughout the city where we have this, not including our glass-only sites. The contract amount listed is an estimate. The actual amount paid is based on the amount of times they have to collect the material, but that's consistent with what we expect that's going to cost. Again, this is not a renegotiated contract, just like we discussed with the last item. The price is adjusted annually based on a consumer price index. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have on this.
Just one for you. We talked about this this morning as well with the drop-off sites. So there are six, but I think the contract only specifies we must, we need to have four. But I guess my direct question to you, are we committed to maintaining those six? One in central and one out west, as you described?
Yeah, I misspoke this morning. The contract does call for five. That one out west is in the contract. So there's five in the contract. The sixth one was added in central to serve the central part of the city where there was kind of a donut in that area. We're committed to continue to provide service somewhere in that area. We know we're going to lose the current site because it's a vacant property being developed, so we're actively looking at sites in that area. And if we can talk to the council members on assistance in finding those sites, we'll do that. But we're fully committed to find a site to maintain that central location.
Great. So the actual site needs to change, but the commitment is there to maintain a central location?
Absolutely, yes.
It's a highly-used area, as you know, and I think real important to my district and Councilmember Bailey's district, too, so we appreciate that confirmation. Okay. Any other proponents on 81? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item 82, in ordinance to amend section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code. By changing the title of the employment classification, known as executive services administrator, to assistant to the city prosecutor, Personnel Board recommends approval.
Public hearing on number 82 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, Deb Sander from the City Human Resources Department, here to answer questions that you may have on this item. And then through item number 87, they're all classifications.
Okay, thank you. We'll consider you a proponent of all those. How's that? Any other proponents on number 82? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item 83, in ordinance to amend section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code to add the employment classification entitled HVAC technician. Personnel Board recommends approval.
Public hearing on number 83 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, oh, go ahead, Louise.
I'm not overdoing my welcome, but I think it's very important for, to have the classification for HVAC. Something that I think was very important during the pandemic, and new technologies were put forth. And I hope that these individuals can make sure that all city facilities are up to date with these concepts post-COVID. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents on 83? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item 84, in ordinance to amend section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code. By changing the salary for the employment classification, known as deputy director, police technology, and reporting services, Personnel Board recommends approval.
Public hearing on number 84 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item 86, in ordinance to amend section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code. By changing the salary for the employment classification, known as librarian three, Personnel Board recommends approval.
This is item 85. Yeah, public hearing on number 85 today. Any proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item 86, in ordinance to amend section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code. By changing the hourly pay range for the employment classification, known as power systems mechanic two, Personnel Board recommends approval.
Public hearing on number 86 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item 87, in ordinance to amend section 23-177 of the Omaha Municipal Code. By changing the hourly pay range for the employment classification, known as mechanical inspector, Personnel Board recommends approval.
Public hearing on number 87 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item 88, in ordinance to accept unauthorized disbursement of an agreement with the First Responders Foundation in the amount of $50,400 and authorized funding from the City of Omaha's Fiscal Year 2024 Law Enforcement, Mental Health, and Wellness Act Grant Program.
Public hearing on number 88 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item 89, in ordinance to approve the Douglas Sarpy Mutual Aid Interlocal Agreement for an initial term of five years.
Public hearing on number 89 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Item 90, in ordinance to amend various sections of chapter 23 of the Omaha Municipal Code and to add section 23-573 to reflect changes negotiated with the Professional Fire Service Manager Association for the years 2025 to 2027. Personnel Board recommends approval.
Public hearing on number 90 is today. Proponents, please.
Good evening, Annie Matthews, Labor Relations Director for the city. I'm just here for any questions.
Mark McQueen, attorney with Baird Home. Annie and I negotiated this contract. I can quickly summarize it for you. It's been a long day, I know. It's a three-year deal, 2025 through 27. Wage increases in year one, 5%. Year two, 4%. Year three, 3%. That matches the first three years of the rank-and-file, most recent collective bargaining agreement. Members of fire management also have an opportunity to advance to the top step of their pay progression if they've been with the department 24 years and in fire management for three years. That's an exact provision from police management contract that we negotiated a short while ago. In the area of health insurance, we increased the city's contribution to the Health Savings Account to match the other bargaining units throughout the city. We increased, excuse me, the annual leave vacation carryover by 40 hours. This is the same change that was, that occurred for the police management contract as well. We changed the percentage of allocation of distribution of their paid leave, no expense to the city. They're just, they can, at the time they retire, they can allocate their paid leave to various retirement accounts. We created an opportunity for fire managers to, even if they're in the drop program, to apply for the chief's position for the duration of their drop. This is the exact same change we made with police management, and that's why they requested it. And last but not least, we adjusted holiday pay to account for the Juneteenth holiday. That's it. Respectfully requesting your support for this agreement and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for the overview. Any other proponents to number 90? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Thanks.
Item 91, in ordinance to amend section 2.06 of the Home Rule Charter regarding filling City Council vacancies.
Public hearing on number 91 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents?
Louise Jimenez, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I understand this has been a difficult process to think about losing somebody in the group and then replacing them. And you've got, I think the last decade, you got two examples that I'm aware of. Mr. Pauls went to the legislature, as you know. And Mr. Vinnie Palermo, he had to deal with his behavior in prison. And so at that time, and those two examples that I am aware of, the council elected, selected Ms. Brennan, and then also Mr. Hug. And I think you guys made a fine choice in both cases. So this idea that you have to be in congruency with how the mayor's dealt with if there's a vacancy in the office, I don't buy it. I think that the decision-makers to put the process in place that allowed, for example, Mr. Hug to be here, were correct in their procedural, in wanting the process to be put forth in that fashion. And I agree with it because of Omaha is in the United States, which is a democratic republic. And a democratic republic. We have to understand that there's, yeah, we want to follow the will of the people, but we also want stability and cost-effectiveness in governance. Stability, I think is important, that you consider what this change would require in the length of time to replace a council member. And then cost-effectiveness. The Douglas County Election Commission performs the election process, and this council does not pay for elections. The, for a special election. You do not pay for a special election. Okay? You pay for elections that the county pays for and that the county pays for. You don't pay for special elections, and that's the change that this amendment would do, is that you're going to pay for a special election. The county has a committee of three that replaces the commissioners. And that's all they have to undertake, a fair process that they undertake, which is similar to what you did. Which is not, require a costly election, a snap election, which I don't think it's beneficial for the citizens, the residents. I'm with my representative, Senator John Kavanaugh, who wants this council to be elected with a more, with a longer period of time that allows the residents to consider candidates. And having a snap election isn't, isn't following that idea. So the democratic republic, yeah. The democratic republic is, this is complicated stuff, you know? And I can't follow every item, and so forgive me that I'm up here so many times today. But this is one thing that I wanted to talk about, talk about and wanted to be clear. Thank you.
Any other opponents that want to speak today? Yep. Opponent, right?
Proponent.
Proponents already spoke, but I'll call you in a second. So you can, since you've been here all day, we'll call you up in a second. Are there any opponents that want to speak? Public hearings closed. Ms. Melton, the floor is yours.
Yeah, I'll call up the proponent. State your name and address for the right.
Thank you, thank you, sorry. I was deciding if I wanted to testify today or not. But my name is Marissa Viasil, 3338 Cherry Lane. I live in Bellevue, but I come to Omaha pretty often. I'm a proponent for this. I think it's a good idea to have special elections for a city council member when there's a seat open. As a young person, as a young person specifically also, who I'm looking to move in Omaha pretty soon here. I just think it's a due process. Like if I want to vote for someone to come into the office that I'm representing or that's in my community, I think that's a good idea. I know that the past election with Ron Hug, it was kind of hard to decide who to take that seat. And it took the city council a hard decision, and it shouldn't, in my, in my experience, I don't think it should be up to you guys to decide who takes a seat. I think it should be up to the citizens who live in that area to decide who they want to elect. Even though Ron Hug has been doing a good job, and I appreciate his work, he wasn't elected by the people in his community. So I would really appreciate special elections and continuing to have like the voices of the people in the community to have that opportunity to elect who they want to be in their seat. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then I quickly, I think I might, are we done? I'm sorry, did you close it? I just quickly wanted to say, there's a third one. And actually, it started, it's from my district, Chuck Segerson. He actually had to step down because he had a stroke. And so then that's how my predecessor was appointed. And I would agree with you. I think the council made an excellent choice with selecting Mr. Hug. This has absolutely nothing to do with Mr. Hug. I think he would have been elected if there was a special election. But I think it's the same thing that I've heard from my district back with Chuck Segerson to Mr. Paul's district. I'm friends with Ms. Colleen Brennan. I think she's a fabulous person. I'm just saying that I think the people in the districts, from what I've heard, it sounds like the majority would like to vote for him. We don't need to make this decision. All we're voting for this today is, this is going to go on the ballot, let the people decide. So you may have one opinion, Louise may have another. You get to, well, if you move into the city fast enough, you'll get to have a vote, and Louise can have a vote, and the majority will decide whether we elect him or appoint him. And I think that's the way it probably should work. So that's all I have to say on this one. I've got Homeowners Association.
Go ahead. I'll also just add, as the last item of the day, for those that are, you know, weighing in on this item and that might be watching from home, should this be placed on the ballot for the spring election, it would be in May. And should voters approve it, it's still not in effect. I just want to make that to be clear, because there could be confusion around that. It would take a change in the state law for this to actually occur. So even if we put this on the ballot next week and voters approve it here locally in Omaha, it is not, it will not be in effect unless and until the state legislature would take action on it. So I just wanted that to be clear, too. it, so I just wanted that to be clear too. Okay. I don't see any further lights. Public hearing is closed.
Non-action items, items 92 through 119 do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, roll call.
Melton is absent, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Hug, Johnson, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 6:20.